Can we go ahead and get started? All right, welcome to our Oceanside Unified School District Board meeting for May 11. I'm gonna go ahead and start out with a call to order at 6:09 PM. Thanks for your patience. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call. I'll start with Board Vice President Eric Joyce.
President.
Board Secretary Raquel Alvarez.
President.
Mike Blessing.
President.
Eleanor Evans.
President.
All accounted for, President accounted for. So, item 2B, Public Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. In closed session today, the board directed legal counsel to initiate or intervene in a legal action by a four-one vote. The action, the defendants, and the other particular shall, once formally commenced, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry, unless to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to effectuate service, a process on one or more unserved parties. For that to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. That was my report out. So, next item, my favorite. Item 2C, Student Representatives. We have Oceanside High School Gabby Kimbrell. Saw her on here. Gabby, how are things going over at Oceanside High School?
Goodie, oh, can you guys hear me? Sorry.
Yes.
Good evening, good evening, Board members and community members. Thank you for allowing me to share what's happening at Oceanside High School. Students learned about some exciting opportunities for the summer just before we went on break. Parents and kids got calls and emails about enrichment and opportunities and dates. Some of the programs that we are looking forward to include the Oceanside Opportunity Program, Math Bootcamp, and Pirate Academic for Leaders. Some of the programs offer the opportunity to learn and additional credits, and they all provide an opportunity to rediscover learning. Our Health Academy held its annual blood drive last week. It was the first time all year that we've been able to donate on campus. Our PTO has hosted an e-waste recycling day yesterday, May 10th, as for our school fundraiser. The proceeds go to help funds on campus. This week, our sports will be competing against Mission Vista for soccer and baseball, San Diego for boys volleyball and track, La Costa Canyon for softball and girls golf, RBV for soccer and baseball, San Marcos for water polo, Carlsbad for softball, um, golf for Vista High School and Sage Creek for basketball. OHS Choir is hosting their annual virtual competition on Saturday. Dr. V continues to provide his insight and recognize students on his weekly YouTube live show. Check out our website for more information. On behalf of the class of 2021, we'd like to thank the Board Superintendent Dr. Vitale and Dr. Lawrence and Lovey for allowing us to have prom. The theme is Ice and Fire, and we will be holding it outside. Thank you for letting us help the seniors create a positive memory, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gabby. So let's hear what's going on at El Camino High School. Isaiah S. Aguilar.
Hi. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to Board President Dr. Riggin and the rest of the Board members, as well as to Superintendent Dr. Vitale and her executive staff, and all who are present this evening for giving me the time to speak. My name is Isaiah Aguilar, and I am the ASB President, as well as the student representative for El Camino High School. Regarding our school organizations and clubs, ASB, the week of April 26th to the 30th, our school's class did a Week of Kindness. Each day of the week, we posted a positive quote on our school's ASB Instagram account. On Wednesday and Friday, which are the second days for each cohort, we left a lollipop with an encouraging note tied to them and left one on each and every car in our student parking lot. We wanted each student to find a tree and a kind note waiting for them in their car after school, whether their day had been going good or bad. Everyone enjoys a little bit of a positive fist. The week of May 3rd to the 7th was National Teacher Appreciation Week. Our class designed specific and detailed certificates for each subject and delivered each individual poster to the teachers. We also left treats, individually wrapped donuts to each teacher's school mailbox. As of right now, we're getting ready to open our ASB class applications to our student body. PALS, which stands for Peer Assistant Leadership. The week of May 3rd to the 7th as well, PALS hosted a College Commitment Spirit Week to our, for our senior class of 2021. Monday was Pyjama Day, Don't Sleep on Your Future. Tuesday was Tourist Day, Venture Out Into Your Future. Wednesday was Ammo Day, Marching Into Your Future. Thursday was Just College Gear Day, and finally Friday was Sports Day, Knock Your Future Out of the Park. Regarding sports, Cheer had their annual end of the year banquet to honor the varsity, junior varsity, and freshman cheer squads. Right now, applications for Cheer tryouts to join next year are open, as well as the applications for our health medics for sports events. Thank you, Board members and executive staffs for giving me the time to speak today, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Isaiah. And let's hear, last but not least, from Surfside, Omarion Barnett.
Dr. Begin, Omarion Barnett has not arrived at the meeting yet.
Okay, will you let us know if he jumps in, and we'll do a sidebar? Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item 2D, Approval of the Agenda. I'd like to call for a motion to accept the agenda as presented, with the exception of item 5X, which is being pulled from tonight's agenda.
I move that we accept.
All right, I have a first. I have a I have a move in a second. All right. All in favor? Hi.
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 All right, thank you for approving the agenda 5O. So we're moving on to item 3, Dr. Vitale, your report.
Yes, I just have one piece of good news to share tonight. I'm very proud to recognize our Adult Transition Program for earning the Excellence in Special Education Award, recognizing outstanding individuals who make a difference supporting students with special needs. This honor is presented by the North Coastal Consortium for Special Education. We finally refer to that as NICSIA, and their Community Advisory Committee. Out of 14 districts and 150 nominations, OUSD ATP was selected. OUSD Adult Transition Program was nominated and selected for Collaborative Team. Congratulations to the entire ATP staff on your continued collaboration and positive student outcomes. Thank you, Dr. Begin.
Yeah, all right. So we're moving on to the next item, Board Reports. Eric, I'll start with Board Vice President.
Over the last month, I did a couple of different trainings. So the Governance with an Equity Lens Training was our second part. I went to and attended several committees, including the Assembly of Renaming Committee, and then also an advocacy meeting with our Assembly District Youth and Education, Youth Education and Higher Education, and then the Curriculum Advisory Committee, which has some really exciting things that they're working on. And I also was able to attend the Oceanside High and El Camino Track Meet, which was amazing, and KOCT broadcast, and it's continuing to broadcast that this week. So if you get a chance, check it out. And then I also caught a half of high school soccer, Oceanside High School soccer. So it was good to do some regular kind of school stuff and also get some really important training.
Thanks, Eric. And we'll go over to Board Recorder Raquel Alvarez. Do you want to share?
I went to the DPAC meeting that we just recently had. I was able also to attend our LCAP meeting, which had, again, some very interesting conversations in regards to the next steps that we're taking for district, and went to the SLR Renaming Committee and loving the conversations that we have in that committee meeting, went to a CAC Committee meeting, went to a campus and just kind of walked and talked with some students, which, again, is just seeing them on campus again is great and just hearing where they are at this point, and looking forward to just what next year will bring and what it's going to look like. So just hearing the conversations from them firsthand makes a big difference. So, thank you.
Thank you, Raquel. I'll go over to Mike Blessing.
No report, really. I've been following some of the council activities on El Corazon, and they apparently just approved the, excuse me, a sports arena complex up on the El Corazon site that can, it's gonna house the soccers, I guess, from San Diego and and be in a, basically a facility of 5,000 to 7,000 people that can be serviced in this arena. So for, and they're gonna have things other than just sports in there too as well. So it's a concert venue and a variety of other things, right down the street from El Camino. So it's an interesting piece of information, I thought.
Yeah, thanks for sharing. I have to look into that. Eleanor, would you like to share?
Please, thank you. May is the time we honor our educators everywhere, including as well as honoring our mothers biologically or adopted male or female. Our mothers are our first teacher. May is Asian American Pacific Islander Month, and I need to make a note that for the Filipino community, it's Filipino Heritage Month in October. May particularly, May 2021, is our realization that public education in America goes beyond reading, writing, arithmetic, but incorporates relationships, respect for diversity, and instills the values of fairness, teamwork, and justice, as well as the many leadership Cs, which define, which is defined as collaboration, cooperation, caring, collective well-being, culture unity, character, and courage. Education is the foundation of democracy. Public education is vital to champion, protect, and promoting democracy. In essence, public education brings together America's diversity and weaves it all into a tapestry of one community. My participation this month has to honor our heritage of quality, safe, public education. As a member of the County of San Diego, Leon Williams Human Relations Commission, I was requested and submitted a calendar of cultural heritage months, which included, last month, the county was able to have its lights represent the colors of the of Arab-American communities since it was American Heritage Month in April. I've also been appointed to the Safety Community, Safety Committee for the County of San Diego. As a member of the San Diego County Taxpayers Association, I really had some deep dive questions regarding how is it that San Diego County Taxpayers Association, how do they decide how and why, which schools, which bonds for which, whether school, water, districts, other municipalities, how do they decide who what they're going to endorse or not endorse? So that was very enlightening, and I'll share it later. Okay, and I we need, I need to remind our colleagues that this weekend, the CBSA Delegate Assembly will be offered. So please plan to attend. Thank you. That's my report.
Thanks, Eleanor. And mine's pretty short. I did meet with both of our labor partners, and I, we had a, with my board colleague Raquel, met with our CSCA, our Classified Employee Group, which was eye-opening. I also joined Raquel at the LCAP Stakeholder Meeting. I was part of learning about all the parent resources we have in our district at our Special Education Partner Panel. And I had a really interesting conversation earlier this week with the Oceanside Library. They did a community conversation on racial equity and inclusion. And it was interesting to have different stakeholders all over Oceanside share their thoughts and add some how we want it to look in the future. And then today, I had another eye-opening experience with our OUSD Counseling Advisory meeting with our Oceanside High School counselors. So, just a few things we did. All right, so we're moving on to item 5, General Consent Items. We removed, we voted to remove item X, so I will take a motion to approve the general consent items.
I make that motion.
Thanks, Eleanor. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'm first and second. Any discussion or questions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, I, General Consent Items?
Hi.
Motion carries 5O. All right, our next item is 7, Personnel. So 7A, Adoption of Resolution Number 28 for the 2020, 2021 school year. It's Proclamation for the Day of the Teacher, which is Wednesday, May 12th, 2021, tomorrow.
Yes, School Board, I'd like to present the next three items, 7A, B, and C for proclamation by the Board. First one is, as you said, proclamation for Day of the Teacher, Wednesday, May 12th. The second, 7B, is our recognition of classified employees for Appreciation Week, May 16th through the 22nd. And the third proclamation is for May 1st, Day of the Principal. We've all heard the adage that it takes a village to raise a child, and in Oceanside, it takes a village to educate children. And these are the three groups that provide the educational, social, emotional, and take care of all the multiple needs of our students, the 16,000-plus students in Oceanside. And it's the work that they do that goes, I think, sometimes without great recognition. So this is a minute for us to to pause and look to each other and look to these groups for the support that we provided in a very challenging year and how we've risen up in an extraordinary time. We have a special message that I'd like to play before the Board votes on these three items. And this is a message from our Superintendent Dr. Vitale, along with our Board President, Dr. Begin. So if we can take just a second to capture some sentiment for the great work that we've done this year with all our employees.
Since March of last year, many of you have worked out of break. You stepped up to the plate to serve our community in ways both seen and unseen. And this is a moment to say thank you to all of you across Oceanside Unified School District, to our classified staff. You've kept our families nourished and connected to the resources that they have needed. Throughout constant changes, we've innovated to provide quality supports to our community and to bring our students back to campus safely and strategically. Every department has played a role in keeping our district moving forward and shown what it means to be a truly unified district. To our teachers, your entire profession has looked different over this last year. You learned how to build connections through a screen. You've supported and cared for your students during a life-altering time, and you've adapted your classrooms to welcome students back to a safe and supportive environment. And to our leadership, you've led your teams by example and worked tirelessly to support students, staff, and the community. You've had late nights and long days, working through ever-growing lists of tasks while never losing sight of the big picture, helping our students and staff and families, and eliminating barriers of access to educate and provide basic needs.
COVID-19 has been hard on all students, family, OUSD staff, and the entire community. There are no words for the amount of gratitude or respect that I have and my fellow Board members have for the educators, support staff, administrators, and all our OUSD employees, family. Throughout these trying times, all of you have worked tirelessly to support our students and families. Please take time to reflect on all of these successes that we have had in these trying times. Your dedication to work to support our students and families has been truly amazing. We are proud of our OUSD staff that has been able to put aside our differences and remain focused on supporting our students.
So on behalf of the Board of Education and the Cabinet Team, we proclaim May 1st as Day of the Principal, May 12th as Day of the Teacher, and May 16th through 22nd as Classified Appreciation Week. Thank you all so very much.
All right, I think that captures our feeling for the Board to go ahead and vote on these three important items.
All right, I'm gonna take these votes separately, just to make them legit. So let's start with item 7A, Adoption, Day of the Teacher. All in favor? Or actually, I have a motion. How about I take a motion first?
I move.
Move, second. All in favor?
Hi.
I with enthusiasm.
Thank you. Great, thank you. We'll go, item 7B, Adoption of Resolution for the Classified Employee Appreciation Week.
Definitely.
I have a motion from Eleanor. Do I have a second? Raquel, super. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Item 7C, The Resolution Proclaiming May 1st as Day of the Principal. I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
All right, the first and second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries 5O. We're moving on to item 7D, Approval of the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for 2021, 2022 School Year.
Each year, the district must submit this to the state. It's a estimation of potential declarations to cover for qualified educators. So it's a standard item that we bring each year as required.
Will entertain a motion?
Move.
I'll make a motion.
Have a first and a second? Any questions? All in favor?
I. Hi.
Motion carries 5O. All right, moving on to item 8, Curriculum and Instruction. Item 8A, we have an update for our in-person instruction. So I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. So tonight, we're going to bring our latest update to the Board on COVID-19 and most of the information around vaccination, and also what will be happening with our educational programs over the summer and our recommendation moving into the next school year. So the next slide just reminds the Board of previous direction. All of our schools are currently in a five-day-a-week hybrid model. On the next slide, these are changes since our last board meeting. We've made, in our county and in our state, significant progress on vaccine distribution, and death and hospitalizations are down, and right now, 16-year-olds and above are eligible for a vaccine. No appointments are needed, and everyone is eligible at this time. And the governor has shared that by June 15th, if the full supply of vaccinations are still in place for all Californians 16 years and up, and hospitalizations are low and stable, that we will move beyond the blueprint, and perhaps different decisions will be made as far as restrictions for our various tiers. We anticipate that there might be some information, with the governors may revise this year, that might speak to the beyond-the-blueprint information. So we look forward to hearing about that. We'll remind the Board that every decision that we have had to make, the very challenging decisions over this last year, we've endeavored to focus on both health and safety and educational outcomes. And to shed some more light on what we anticipate for summer and the very broad offerings that we are able to offer our students, and then also looking into next year, is Dr. Mercedes Lovey.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Next slide, please. So as Dr. Vitale said, we've continued to monitor our state and local data very carefully about the status of COVID-19, its spread, and the ways that we can become as safe as possible in our work. And what we see here is a forecast that is prepared by various universities and research institutions about the hospitalization rates in San Diego County. If you look at the graph, you will see there is a turquoise line that is a composite of all of the projections made by these different universities. You see that turquoise line is low and flat, which refers back to what Dr. Vitale has said about the ending of the tiered system if those hospitalizations become stable and low. And so this is good news for us as we move forward. Next slide, please. We are also looking here at the report from May 5th. This is the most current report we have on San Diego County and the city of Oceanside for the case rates and triggers. So I'll call your attention first to the chart on the left, where you see under the case rates for the county, we are at five cases per 100,000 with a seven-day lag, which puts us in the orange tier in our county. You can also see that in this chart, you'll see many green circles with checks in them, which means that we are meeting all of the metrics for a safer environment as far as COVID-19. We have excellent contact tracing, we have case investigation, and very low testing positivity. The only area that we have a red X is in community outbreaks, which again, is the only area we're not meeting that. If we move to the chart from May 5th on the right, you will see that in Oceanside, we are actually below the county in the number of cases per 100,000 at 4.8. So again, this is a lower number. Next slide. So when we look at vaccines, this is really wonderful news. All people 16 years and older in San Diego County are eligible for COVID-19, and the county has opened up vaccine centers that are no point needed, which one is here in Oceanside at the North Coastal Live Well Health Center. It's right on Mission Avenue, Sunday through Thursday, from 9:00 to 3:30 for all people 16 years and older. Those people who are 16 and 17 will need to bring a parent with them for permission. Next slide, please. The other thing that's really important is our county health department has targeted having 75% of all eligible population vaccinated. So these two graphs show you the progress that's being made, and the rapid progress is being made in just six days. So in just six days, we have seen that there are over, almost a quarter of a million new people who've had at least their first vaccination, and that as of yesterday, we are 86% of the way towards having that 75% of eligible population vaccinated. Very good news for us, and we are seeing more and more, we're at 62%, 62.5% of our eligible population being fully vaccinated. Next slide, please. Since we've gone, since the pandemic started, one of the things we continue to always be focusing on is how do we bring students back into our educational environment in person? How do we continue to provide them with services and supports? So right from the beginning, we offered take-home lunches, emergency feeding to the community, starting within days of the physical shutdown of schools. Our Nutrition Services Department was on the front line right away to make sure that our community, even when we were at the tightest lockdowns in the very beginning, had food. Then you'll see that we put forward a phased approach to in-person services, starting with expanded enrichment, which was our childcare and enrichment programs for our students in K through 5, moving on to special assessment, then have expansion into our secondary learning centers, offering small at-promised cohorts for targeted instruction. We had related services. Now we're in hybrid, and we're looking forward to full in-person instruction. Next slide, please. The other thing I would like to share with the Board is that we do know that we have several different models and one that our community's been very interested in. We have three different models of instruction right now that is, that are happening. If you look at this, this is information, the most current information, as reported to the County Office of Education by all schools, public, charter, and private, about the status of how they're providing learning opportunities to their students. So if you look, we have from the furthest left, we have students learning in full-time on-campus instruction. Then where the blue arrow is, we see students in hybrid learning. Then we see students in distance learning, and the fourth line is how many employees are on campus. Next slide, please. This is another way to look at this data. So this graphic is produced using this, the data you saw before, and the blue dotted line are those percentage of students in San Diego County who are in a distance learning, 100% distance. When you see the gray line, that is students who are in hybrid learning, and when you see the green line, that is in-person learning. And if you look, you can see this is the most updated information, again, as of April 26th, and we clicked on this. And we clicked on this to be only school districts. So as you can see, even among school districts within our own county, that the largest percentage of students are in distance learning, with forty-two point three eight percent of students are in full-distance learning as of April twenty-sixth. Oceanside, which is in hybrid, we are among the forty point five one percent of the students who are in a hybrid learning. So we were also curious about when we look at all schools, not just school districts, but when we look at charters, both classroom-based and non-classroom-based, and our charter schools, what do we see? And when we see this, you can see on this chart, when we clicked all schools and all methods, you can see that there is very little change. In-person instruction still is the smallest percentage. Hybrid is about thirty-nine point five six, and distance is forty-two point three one. So again, to share with the board, we are all in progress towards a full in-person, and we are on the journey in hybrid. Next slide, please. So as we look forward, we're very excited to be talking about our summer school programming. So the first thing we want to be sharing with you is we will be having in-person instruction at all of our school sites. We will be following safety protocols for our staff, students, and community. We're going to be offering multiple sessions for all of our students so that families can still have that time together. Our employees can have the time with their families in a break from their work, and that we will be providing enrichment opportunities as well as academic opportunities. Next slide. And our plans at this point really are quite robust. We plan on offering multiple services for over three thousand students. We will have around two hundred students in extended school year, and we'll explain more about that. We have migrant education English learners who will also have an opportunity to participate in an academic focus. We'll have elementary education, middle school, and secondary options with enrichment, acceleration, and credit recovery opportunities along with skill building. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Gravlin, senior director, to share a little bit more about our summer programming.
And good evening, board members. Dr. Vitale, I am excited to share with you. And next slide, please. I'm excited to share with you some of the opportunities that will be coming forward this summer. To start with, we're talking a bit about our selection process for how are students determined to attend which particular programs? And so we are using a multi-measures system, both qualitative and quantitative data to help guide which students need which support and where it is proper placement for them. Our current universal screening tools provide educators with information to assist in the identification of student need and the monitoring of their progress over time for both academics and for social-emotional learning. So we have a suite of tools that we use. First of all, we have the Eye Ready program, which we use for students in grades K through eight. This is language arts and mathematics assessment. We also have our panorama for students in grades, second grades two through twelve, and this assists us with the social-emotional learning content. And then we also have our newest tool, which is the Renaissance Learning, the STAR test. And this is a test that is used for our rising eighth graders through twelfth grade. This is a new assessment, and it was determined that Eye Ready was not necessarily meeting the needs of our students in the high school level. And so a group of teachers, educators were brought together from middle and high school to take a look at some alternative options. And identified as the front leader of the tool that was best suited for their needs was the Renaissance Learning Tool STAR. Along with this comes, it's an adaptive test, and along with it comes curriculum support that is called Freckle. And so we're happy to be able to offer that assessment to our secondary educators per their request. This is something that they felt was very important. Of course, these tools are just that, they're tools. And where we really look toward when we're looking to qualitative information is to teacher and principal administrator recommendation for our students. And so together, between our qualitative and quantitative assessments and from our recommendations, we are able to identify which students we place in which programs. Next slide, please. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Leah Dartis.
Thank you, Mrs. Gravlin. Good evening, board members and Dr. Vitale. The Extended School Year Services is an individualized instructional program for eligible students with disabilities that is provided beyond the school year. The need for E S Y services must be determined on an individual basis for regression and recruitment of skills. This year, we have currently have four hundred and one students that qualify for E S Y. Based on previous attendance, we anticipate about two hundred and seventy students, although so far, one hundred and thirty-two students have applied. Families fill out the application online, or a department member from the spent department can help to help them fill out the application. Transportation is provided for all E S Y eligible students, and these are documented services, so daily attendance is taken and progress reports are given at the end. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Dartis. So along with our E S Y program, we also have programming specially designed for our English-language learners. This will support our students in grades one, K one, our rising fifth graders and our rising eighth graders. The in-person instructional focus on oral and written language development as well as numeracy and algebraic thinking. The hands-on math from Vmath will make, take abstract concepts and bring them into concrete learning and develop the language of mathematics. We'll also be using the Right to Learn program to assist with written language. Students will attend eight-thirty to eleven forty-five. They are also able to participate in our afternoon programming for enrichment. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Sparks.
Thank you, Ms. Gravlin. We also would like to share with the board and Superintendent Vitale that we're offering migrant education summer programming, which consists of in-person academics from eight-thirty to twelve each day through June fifteenth through June thirtieth for grades K through eight. This will take place at Lower Elementary School. There'll be an academic focus that emphasizes English-language arts and math instruction as well as the social-emotional learning component that focuses in on self-awareness and community building for our migrant education students. Blessing is also provided for our migrant education students. And as of now, we have about eighty of the one hundred and seventy students who are identified as migrant ed, who are expected to participate, and will continue to find ways to enroll students to get as close to that one seventy number as possible. Now back to Vicki.
So the opportunities that we've just talked about are things that we've had in the past. And so now let's talk a little bit about what's coming, what is new and different that we are able to offer, and we're extremely excited about these opportunities for our students. Starting with our elementary in-person learning, we are offering sessions from eight-thirty to twelve. We are offering two opportunities. They're three weeks in length, and they will be during the months of June and July. Focus in on these opportunities are academic, and they are English-language arts and mathematics-centered. They're focused in on essential standards to help mitigate some of this disruption in learning that could have occurred due to our COVID-19 pandemic. In the afternoon, we are also offering some enrichment opportunities centered around STEAM, so science, technology, engineering, arts, math, and we're adding in physical activity as well. So we will have lessons that will be pre-prepared for those sessions in the afternoon. They are being designed currently by a team of teachers who will train our paraprofessionals and will work alongside them in planning those lessons and offering those opportunities. The core morning academic sessions will be provided by credentialed educators in our district. The curriculum for our morning session is research-based, aligned to both our math and language arts core adoptions. Next slide, please. Because some of our families have asked, oh, sorry, there was a little bit on there about TK. That's going to come up in the next, our Kinder Camp, sorry. I have a whole slide on Kinder Camp because I'm so excited about it. So hang in there for a moment. But for some of our families who did not, who would still prefer to have a virtual learning opportunity, we do have that available as well. And so what we're looking at are forty-minute daily drop-in sessions during the weeks that you see listed here, where students have the opportunity to come online with a teacher, a credential teacher, who will help them with oral language development, excitement about reading. They will do read-alouds, shared reading, offer journaling opportunities, and have a scavenger hunt to help them with their reading, reading, learning that they can also do with their families at home. We're super excited that we have take-home backpacks that we are giving to kids in grades TK through third. These backpacks are filled with standard-based workbook. They have journals, there's high-interest-level readers, and there are directions and support for families in both English and Spanish that are in the backpack. So this could be at-home learning. But if a parent would like to, their child could join with a credential teacher during a drop-in session, and that credential teacher can also assist them with some of that take-home learning. Inside those backpacks, we'll also be offering school supplies so that every child has what they need for learning at home. Next slide, please. Okay, here's what I missed, skipped over on the last one. So this is our TK and kindergarten bridging program, lovingly known as Kinder Camp. This is for our youngest learners, our newest to the O U S D family, our incoming TK and K. And we will be offering an opportunity for them to come two days during the week, the week of August second through the sixth. We'll have small group opportunity. They will focus in on social-emotional development through literature, art, and number sense, and using a curriculum that was selected by our teachers called Cozy Corner. They'll learn classroom procedures, they will have an opportunity to socialize and kind of get a step into what does school really look like when I come in the fall? So we're really excited about that opportunity. Letters will go out to families inviting them to the program. Next slide, please. So on this particular slide, I'm going to have Dr. Lawrence join me because this is an exciting collaborative effort. Our TWBI program will also be having an enrichment and academic opportunity. So for the students who participate in our two-way bilingual immersion program, we'll be offering a summer academic and enrichment camp. It will be multi-aged at the elementary, so we will have one camp that will be, or one class that will be for K two, and then one opportunity for grades three through five. The focus here will really be on oral language development and vocabulary to help instill that, again, the practice of their Spanish language in the classroom. Students who participate in this particular program will also be able to attend the afternoon enrichment. And Dr. Lawrence?
Thank you. For secondary students in the TWBI program, summer enrichment sessions will be held at Chavez Middle School. Students will receive focused workshop sessions by teachers in the areas of reading, speaking, and writing. Students will focus on the process of argumentative writing. They will use their pieces to engage in activities that prompt students to summarize, explain, and defend their position in Spanish. In addition to this, students moving to the AP Language and Culture class in the eighth grade in the fall will engage in a focused on, focused on advanced grammar and reading comprehension while engaging in group discussions and presentations. These courses are designed to support the needs of our TWBI students at the secondary level as they prepare for the next school year. Next slide, please. This summer, our middle school sites, along with our base schools, middle levels, will host academic and enrichment summer sessions. These summer offerings are based on the number of requests made for each site. Each site will offer math, English, science, and academic offerings. These sites will offer, will offer in-person and virtual sessions. Some sites may also include offerings such as P E and humanities. Each site will offer enrichment based on the unique makeup and focus of their school sites. They may include STEM, music, and writing. Each site this week will provide their families with a signup sheet with their site-specific offerings for enrichment and academic offerings. In addition to this, afternoon camps will be provided at our middle school level, little levels. All secondary students will have access to engage in online tutorials through Apex. This option is available to a student regardless if they engage in any of the academic or enrichment offerings on campus or virtually. This is an option for all of our secondary families. Next slide, please. Our high schools are pleased to present a variety of in-person and virtual school offerings. The offerings at the high school level include credit recovery, acceleration, and enrichment opportunities, including freshman students who will have the opportunity to engage in ninth-grade-specific course offerings at the high school. They will be attending. They may include freshman-specific summer bridging, where students spend time on campus getting acclimated to the campus, understanding course expectations while also forming connections to student mentors on campus. In addition to these offerings, students in grades ten through twelve will have opportunities to engage in dual enrollment opportunities to earn college credit over the summer, English-language learner enrichment, and other site-specific opportunities. This information will be shared by the high schools to their families again this week. Next slide, please. To address the needs of students who may be credit deficient at both the traditional and alternative high school sites, multiple supports will be provided to students during the summer and regular school year. This will include credit recovery sections for students, where students will enroll in credit recovery classes to make up credits through Apex with the support of a teacher. In addition, students will have access to classes where students need the direct instruction of teachers in supplementary classes, where students have historically had more difficulty passing online credit courses, such as in math courses such as Algebra I and II and other content areas. Before and after-school opportunities for learning will also be provided to students to take credit recovery courses and/or to engage in tutorial or special enrichment sessions. Such offerings will be provided to students throughout the year in the areas of AP test prep, college preparation, tutoring sessions, and special workshops focused on improving students' college eligibility. We'll also continue to monitor the progress of all students and provide students with time-sensitive support through placement in these offerings. Next slide, please. Surfside Educational Academy, under the leadership of Principal Franzon, will continue to provide independent learning options for students at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Students with disabilities will continue to be welcomed and supported at Surfside Educational Academy. The placement for students with disabilities at Surfside Education Academy is determined by students' individualized education plan and I U P team's decision for placement. At the elementary level, Surfside Educational Academy students will have the opportunity to engage in pure virtual learning option, which all coursework is completed remotely. Students will have the opportunity to engage in daily support sessions with a teacher. This will be an added support for students next year. Elementary students will also have the option to engage in the blended learning option that will allow for them to come to in-person sessions on campus with their teacher. Next slide, please. At both the middle and high school levels, Surfside Education Academy students will have the option to engage in independent learning in both a pure virtual format, where students engage in learning completely remote and have virtual status checks, check-in sessions with their teacher. In the blended learning model, students have the opportunity to come on campus to engage in status checks with their teachers weekly. Now I turn it over to Dr. Lovey.
Thank you, Dr. Lawrence. We have a robust summer program planned, and we're very happy and proud to be able to offer that. But we also know we want to be looking to that full in-person learning. And just today, it was announced that we have a vaccine, the Pfizer vaccine, will be approved for people ages twelve through fifteen as soon as the C D P H allows for that. Our local San Diego County Vaccination Centers will start providing that vaccine to students who would be as pretty much between seventh grade, seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth graders, and it could start as early as May thirteen. Excellent news as we look forward to, again, making sure that we have a safer re-entry and that we continue to make progress in the health of our community. So as we look forward into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we plan on a full five-day-a-week in-person learning during same hours as we had pre-pandemic, on-campus lunch, opportunities for physical education, which we have physical education specialists here in Oceanside. We have music teachers. We will continue with our two-way bilingual immersion program for Spanish at Reynolds and San Luis Rey. We will have credential counselors at all of our school sites. We will have, again, to continue to work with the county health department to identify safety mitigation supports, and also offering transitional kindergarten at all of our elementary school sites. Next slide, please. Dr. Sparks, would you please share a little bit more about transitional kindergarten?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lovey. So we're excited to share some opportunities that we are expanding for our, some of our youngest learners, which are transitional kindergarten students. Typically, we have students in TK who Typically, we have students in TK who would join us between as they're turning five. Between September and December, but we actually have built out that window. To include students who turn five between July 2nd and December 2nd. To welcome more of our transitional kindergarten students back to our sites. We're also looking forward to expanding TK to all of our sites across OUSD. This is part of a two year kindergarten program that we are working on. And we ask that if parents are interested in this opportunity and we hope that you are, we welcome you to complete the online application through our district TK website. We have some information here on this slide just around what the birthdays look like for students who who could be entering into TK this year. Okay, and first, just to show that we are welcoming and 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 excited about. Having more families participate in our expanded TK program this coming year. Back to Dr. Lovey.
Thank you, Dr. Sparks. We are also excited because in our next slide, we'll be looking at our secondary in person learning. Again, a full five day a week in person learning with school hours, full day, on campus lunch. We will continue with our visual and performing arts, our world language. We have career technical education with. Many, many different segments of CTE available. Dual enrollment with high school where students are able to earn college credit while in high school at the same time. Again, AP Spanish at middle school at Chavez. Intramural and CIF sports will be continuing. And again, we'll continue to look at the health mitigation needs where possible. Next please. Throughout the pandemic, we have been committed to hand hygiene because of that we have had hand washing stations, sanitation. Set hand sanitizer stations available and our air purifiers in every workstation and in every. Classroom available to make sure that our air is as clean as it can be. Next slide please. We are also continuing with face covering and our face covering policy to continue to support. The wearing of face coverings as guidance from the CDPH. Next slide please. And again, making sure that we continue to monitor ourselves for wellness. And that everyone checks themselves at home before they come to work or school. To make sure that we continue to have a healthy environment here at school. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Vitali.
Thank you, ESS team for the very extensive planning for the offerings for summer school. So the recommendation they are, we are making this evening to the board is for the 2122 school year. And we're recommend recommending that we return to full in person learning use pre pandemic, using pre pandemic school hours at all grade levels. And as needed to continue the virus mitigation strategy such as. Using our air purification systems, masking, hand sanitization. And physical distancing where possible. That concludes our formal presentation, Dr. Begin. I am aware that we have some public comments, though.
We have seven.
Take it from here.
Now we have seven public comments. So board colleagues, let's listen to the public comments and then. We can engage in some lively discussion and ask some questions. So who is up first? I'll turn it over to Anne. Anne. Great to get that going.
Okay, our first commenter will be Todd Madison and then Elaine Keswick.
So I just want to remind you, you have three minutes to address the board.
All right, thank you. So deja vu, seems like only yesterday where we're doing this. Glad to see the staff is recommending a return to full time in person learning this fall. It's great to hear. It's truly about time. This morning, we saw another demonstration of what parents want in this district. A rally at the district headquarters with parents once again expressing their desire, the district listened to them and get our kids back in school full time. As I outlined in last month's meeting, this entire year, over and over again, we've seen the district and board ignore parents wishes and do whatever they wanted instead. And last month, with the district laying out a path for a full time return and the board once again voting against it even worse. Last night, we saw what looked like a comprehensive plan to use COVID funding to address learning loss and safety issues. When we're drowning in money as we are, it shouldn't be hard to put together a plan that's safe for both teachers and kids. I've already apologized to my kids, by the way, for the massive debt we're going to leave them so that we can buy Plexiglas and throw it away, but that's an issue for a different time. This morning, we saw parents clearly telling the district what they want. As we saw when the majority of parents voted for in person learning last spring. And as we've seen it almost every board meeting since then over the last year. We've seen here in Oceanside, in other San Diego County schools and across the country, the risk of COVID spread in schools is minimal. Schools are quite literally safer than their surrounding communities. To the board who's continually ignored this science, how do you feel about having damaged the education of 16,000 kids perhaps permanently? And perhaps spreading COVID even further by not opening our safe schools when you could? I'd be ashamed if I were you at the harm that you've done to our kids and our community by continuously ignoring actual science and data in your rush to protect your special interests. Politics, not science, district first, not kids first. Maybe now is the time to figure out how to listen to what your parents want and commit to opening our schools for full in person learning this fall. I look forward to a 5-0 vote in favor of approval. Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Elaine Keswick.
Hi Elaine.
Hi. Hi, good evening, board members and district representatives. My name is Elaine Keswick and I've spoken many times about my daughter Coral. Who attends a special education preschool class in the district. At the last meeting, I shared that my daughter was diagnosed with Duke 15Q at three weeks old. The motto of the Duke 15Q alliances, always believe. And I have to say that those are words we live by in our house. When there is a belief that something can happen, there is true intent. Intent leads to the motivation to create the action plan, which in turn leads to the achievement of what was originally believed. In our house, we believe every day in Coral's abilities, our actions align with that belief. And that is what I feel has been missing this whole time in OUSD and with most of our board members. The belief in and the true intent to bring our students back to school for full time in person instruction. Particularly when it comes to the sped preschool class, we know it can be done because every surrounding district has done it. Yet, OUSD, for whatever reason, has never had the intent to bring our kids back. In my daughter's case, a full time return would have required you to put her four student cohort together with the other five student cohort. For a total of nine students. There is no CDPH regulation, no CDC guidance, no scientific study that says four students is safe, yet nine is dangerous. But because the district feels nine kids with special needs in a classroom poses a serious risk. It didn't happen. However, you still could have fully implemented my daughter's IEP by hiring another teacher with the $79 million you received in order to get kids back in class. With another teacher, the two cohorts could have attended full time while maintaining what I am going to call micro cohorts of four or five students. Why did you never do this? Because there was never an intent to fully implement my daughter's or her peers IEPs. This year, I've heard many excuses for why Coral has had not had access to her full IEP. Including that it's not that easy to have them back full time. Meaning I'm not privy to all the behind the scenes workings and negotiations. But I will share what is quote unquote, not that easy. Everything Coral strives to do. Everything she has accomplished, all that she has learned has come because of her belief and her effort and our support of that. Board members and district representatives, where has been your support for and belief in Coral? For the sake of all students in the district, there needs to be an urgent intent to return to full time instruction. These are our kids' future lives that sit in the balance. Board members, tonight, will you finally take action to approve the district's proposal for a full time return? I certainly hope so. Thank you.
Next two speakers, Amy Palmer and Kyle Dale.
Amy.
Hi. Members of the board and staff, it's been a long year. We all know this. It's pretty much sucked. What has been ever present the entire time has been your lack of consideration for what your actual parents of the district want you to do. It has also been apparent that your lack of planning is your greatest strength. Because every single thing, every single enrichment opportunity you guys have put forth for our students has been very poorly planned. Let's take for instance, our intervention services that were done for our students. Ended last week, which according to my six week calculation that you guys said was supposed to take place. Ended a week early. It started a week before we were supposed to start according to what we were told. Information was lacking. I still don't know if that helped my son at all because I've received no progress reports on how this has helped him. How he has progressed. There is no information sent to me. On how he has done in the class from the start of the class to the end of the class. So I don't even know if it was beneficial or not. Not to mention the fact that the parents were the ones who came up with the fix for the time schedule issues that were so clearly. Evident when you first rolled out the schedule two days after we were told we could sign up. So the fact that you have summer school, great. I'm still hesitant about it because you have shown time and again throughout this year, you cannot plan things properly. You don't think things through. You only talk to your constituents, you only talk to your staff. The school district talks to itself with the teachers union. You don't talk to the parents who have multiple children in these classes. And now have to figure out how we're going to transport our children between different time schedules that you've changed time and time again. This new hybrid schedule, group A in the mornings has stayed the same. TK and K arrive and leave at the same time as grades one through five, but cohort B. Has an entire 30 minutes between drop off between K and. K and TK and grades one through five and an entire hour between pickup in the second session. Why is it group A can come and go at the same time, but group B can't? That's a glaring miscommunication, poor planning. And I'm not excited for what you have planned for this summer, but I signed my kid up anyway because you failed to do anything productive this year at all. So at this point, anything I think is going to be better than nothing, which is what you've done so far. I really, really hope that you do a full 5-0 vote. To approve full five day in person instruction for this fall. Because if you don't, I really don't see any hope for this district in the future. Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Kyle. Hi Kyle.
There we go. Thank you, board. I appreciate it. I'm glad to hear that the the staff is recommending a full return in the fall for all grade levels. It's unfortunate this took to this time to happen and right just enough time for the school year to end. I do expect that the board votes 5-0 in support of returning full time for all grade levels. I've been watching and listening to board meetings over the last 15 months and I've largely remained quiet. I haven't ever commented. At one of the board meetings this morning. I participated in the rally outside of Oceanside School District. It's the first rally protest I've ever taken part in, part of in my life. I don't even generally make reviews on Yelp. And the reason I bring that up is to demonstrate why. Someone like myself would become involved in this process and involved in board meetings and rallies and things like that because it's not in my nature. It's not in my past. What I've seen is very disappointing in terms of the transparency that's afforded the parents of the school district throughout this process. There's been deals made in closed session with labor unions. There's been large decisions made, lack of solicitation from parents outside of one survey that was sent out. And I don't think we need to look any further than what happened with the Wednesday return to school last month. It was very disappointing how that was presented to the board and how that was voted on instead of voting on what the staff had. Recommended, the board took it upon themselves to not even entertain that or vote on it. And begin to have discussions and closed doors with the labor unions. Very disappointed by that. What I do ask is for a 5-0 vote for full return in the fall. I also ask that the board and the district, especially as the summer begins to be. Very clear and transparent with the parents of this district. We've been through a tremendous amount, as have you all over the last year plus. And I say that because there hasn't been a tremendous amount of transparency over the last 15 months. We need to make plans, we need to understand what the future is going to look like. We need to have some predictability. And I think the board absolutely has the power to do that. Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Victoria Mariani.
I'm sorry, Victoria is for public comment.
Okay, so her isn't there. Okay, so.
Okay, so our next speaker will be Alicia Diedrichs and then Damon Garner, Andrea Lee.
All right, Alicia, you're up.
I'm not seeing.
Dr. Begin, Alicia Diedrichs was promoted to a panelist, but it looks like she left.
Okay, if she joins back up, let me know. All right, so Damon is the next.
Yes.
Hi Damon, you're up.
Damon, if you're speaking, you're muted. So Damon Garner, if you're there, you can unmute and begin speaking. So Greg, maybe Damon walked away from his computer. So Andrea Lee.
I don't see her.
Dr. Vitali, Andrea Lee is not in the meeting.
Okay, so Stacy, we can see Damon there, but maybe Damon walked away from the computer. Damon, are you there?
I don't see him.
Okay. Your call on how you'd like to proceed.
All right, well, let's, let's go back to board discussion and questions and if Damon pops his head up, we'll give him his three minutes. All right, I'm looking at my board colleagues. Do we have any questions for staff based on all that information we were presented?
I would like to compliment staff on the work they've done in terms of getting us back on track for the fall and the summer. So thank you very much. Excellent work.
I'll second that with a comment to staff and support. The staff's recommendation this evening and I hope that we all do support it. I think we, I think we will. We're being urged. By our friends in the in the public Zoom world here to support this thing and. We've wanted nothing less than this for as long as they have. It's just time for now, we can be able to do this coming August for full in person return, so. I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Thanks. Anybody have any questions for staff before we do that? Okay, so we have a first and second, so let's do some more discussion and I'll take a vote.
Great.
For the summer programming, this is way back to the. Presentation, I don't think you have to bring it up though. It's, these are kind of brief. The EL program itself is only offered to Kinder first, fifth and eighth grade. Is that correct?
That's correct at this time, yes. Although students who are English learners in other grade levels. Will be able to participate and be prioritized for our other programs as well.
Exactly what I was going to ask, thank you. So there, we're proactively reaching out to those students, but that's, that sounds perfect. And then. The only thing that I was going to bring up is that. Principal Franzen did such a great job at Surfside this year with students that were on virtual and independent study. And creating these spaces where they can come in and work on campus and I saw, it just was really great to witness. It was almost like being on a college campus where you had groups of kids kind of, you know, independently working within bouncing ideas off each other and. They're having a lot of success. So I'd like to see if we can. Help with Surfside's ability to do that and make sure that they have space available for that for next year. So that's just adding on to their programming. So I hope that we can continue to support that. And then the only other. Piece that I had to bring up was also, thank you for all the work. That was a tremendous report and it looks like a lot of great information and. I'm excited that we have such a diverse summer school programming we're offering. I think that's fantastic. It looks like we're going to hit a lot of needs. It looks like we're going to hit a lot of needs in the summer school programming. I'd like to never mind. Actually, that's something I'll bring up at board discussion.
I'll piggyback on what you were asking, Eric, about the I know we had an ARC program and our ARC program, we've kind of moved it over into our independent study. Am I correct? Dr. Lovey.
So we are looking as when we opened up Surfside, one of the things we wanted to look is to reimagine how education could look. And so that included opportunities for students that would be a hybrid and also direct instruction and also a blended program. Then the pandemic came and so we got an opportunity to have our virtual learning. And so, yes, we're trying to really reimagine and maximize our services to students and our resources.
So I now I'm trying to get at. So we had a program, an ARC program that met students' needs, but we kind of moved it over to this. Does that program look different than what we had before, or is it the same? When you say reimagine, what's different about it?
So a couple of things. One of the major differences that we have is the opportunity to the number of students that are enrolled, the opportunities, how many semesters we offer, or how many trimesters or quarters we offer. And so we want to align it with our other secondary opportunities.
Okay. All right, I won't get into the weeds on that one. I got lots of questions about that, but I can do that offline. So my other concern was our secondary in-person learning. So I sit on the LCAP committee along with Board Member Alvarez. We've been talking a lot about social emotional support as well as the funding that's coming in for COVID relief. What are we doing in the secondary to address social emotional learning? And because I didn't see anything about counselor support.
Right. So one of the things that we have right now with our counselors is we did review the data on the number of counselors that are the ideal according to the ACTA guidance, the California, I'm sorry, the American Counseling Association. So we do have a recommended. We also looked at what those numbers were, both locally in our county and across our state. We're constantly reviewing that to make sure that Oceanside is competitive with the other districts. And what we found is that Oceanside actually has a very good, it's not as good as we of course would like, but it is a very good and one of the best ratio student to counselors in the county. And we can come back with exact numbers for the board on that. So we do know that we do have a very high ratio at secondary level.
Yeah, we do have a high ratio, like four hundred to one is what I've been told. And we're losing a counselor from what I what I've heard from the schools. We're losing a counselor because of ARC program. So we're actually reducing some of the support. So I'd really like, and I would like to give directions to you guys to really look at how we can bolster in our secondary, the counseling support, because it's coming off this pandemic. Students being isolated, students needing more help with academics, we're going to need some more support from our counselors. And that doesn't mean loading up their ratios. That means taking the counselors that were possibly in ARC and having them come in to help even out that load. However, you guys decide to do it, but there is a huge need here. And I didn't see that in this presentation. I have a kid in middle school. I know Board Member Alvarez has a son going into high school. So these are all huge needs that we see as families that need to be addressed moving forward.
Thank you.
Those are all my questions. Anybody else?
I think mine goes with the yellow.
All right, do any other board members?
Yeah, actually, I had a thing real quick. I know that we're, I applaud you guys with this presentation. It's amazing. It's, I love the data. You know, me and data, right? So I love that we've been able to open up the the summer school to more students. Initially, it sounded like it was just going to be very limited and it was going to be just kind of a small thing and things. And now hearing it very differently, it just, it makes me very happy to see, to be able to open it up to everybody, to be able to come in and do and that we're targeting different groups and different areas and different needs. So I love that we're being able to do that. And thank you so much for doing that. But I just want to make sure that we're also, we're talking to all those that are going to be in there and doing the summer school and that are going to be teaching it and me working with them. That we're bringing them on board and we're having that communication and the collaboration with them, you know, because you guys are working amazingly and making these things happen that just as long as we're communicating with everybody. So everybody knows where we're at because it gets lost and everything. All the meetings and everybody, all the Zoom meetings that we have here and there, you know, it gets things get lost, obviously. So just to make sure that we continue to get that out there, to figure out again, a great way and a way that we can make sure that we're communicating this out to our families. We've got to get creative. We've got to get you know, and I talked about it yesterday, that we have to be creative about how we get out there to our families. And and if it's just word of mouth to one family to another, to another. So for the families that are in this board meeting that you know because we have other families that are not able to be here or don't come to the meetings or don't understand how to get into Zoom meetings and things like that, please. Let's let's just share with one another that these amazing things are happening within our district as we move forward and coming back full next year and what that's that amazing thing is going to look like is then coming back, you know, in a normal way as much as possible is going to be great. So but just getting everybody on the same page and just knowing that we're doing all these great things for our students is is huge. And so everybody needs to know that these great things are happening. And I just want to applaud not only you all for doing this, but our teachers and our staff because you guys, from the very get go, from the moment that this all started to happen, the moment that they said everything needed to shut down, you, everybody jumped in and just started getting things going. The teachers just jumped in try and immediately had to figure out, immediately had to figure out how to get a Zoom, how to get our students involved, how to get them interactive. And so I just applaud you all because it's just, this has been a lot. It's been a lot. It's been a roller coaster of emotions, not only for our students, for our families, for ourselves. It's a lot to have to be going through. And so I just applaud everybody because it is a village. We have become a village of everybody just coming together to make things happen, to to be there for our students and for our families, to support them from just asking the small things and knocking on doors as to why they're not able to come to a Zoom meeting, to nutritional services, to just just everything. So thank you all. And I applaud you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Alvarez. I want to really echo that. You, thank you for acknowledging our teachers. The reason that our programs are able to be offered is our classified staff and our teachers are stepping up to work during a time that after they've worked a long year and they're stepping up to offer these opportunities to our students. And our principals are working diligently nights, weekends, and as our teachers are working nights and weekends, like Dr. Vitale had said, to get letters out to families, to invite them personally to the summer programs, to make sure that they're there. Our APs are knocking on doors, making phone calls. We've had a forty one percent decrease in chronic absenteeism since spring break and improvements. So we really, it really is a team and everyone is working really hard. So Trustee Alvarez, thank you so much for bringing that forward because ESS team has worked hard and our principals, our APs and our teachers, our classified staff have just really no matter what we've asked, they've stepped up and they've been terrific.
Thanks, Dr. Lovey. And I want to say thanks to my board colleagues. I, you know, I'll be honest with you guys. I've been quiet this whole time. I truly take offense when anybody says that we're not listening to our public or our parents. We have three board members that are parents on here. I'm finding a way to make it work. We're all finding a way to work and we're supporting each other. So I just have to go out there and say, we do not have bad intentions. We have laws to follow. There are so many moving parts to putting these things together. What you guys put together for summer school and for in-person instruction, I look forward to what's coming after that is great. It's it's really robust and I'm excited for you guys to share it with parents and families. So with that, I'll go ahead and take a call for the vote. All in favor, returning to full in-person instruction next school year? Hi. All right, motion carries five oh. All right, I'll get off my soapbox. All right, next one. And we will start with eight B ratification of license agreement with Renaissance for Star Assessment and Freckle Curriculum.
Good evening, Board. Yes, this item is what Mrs. Gravlin shared in the last presentation. The update for our secondary, our high school students and our rising eighth graders to address their needs for a universal screener and a adaptive curriculum to support our students.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Any questions, discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of item. Motion carries five oh. Next item, item C approval of revised dual immersion two-way bilingual immersion district master plan.
Yes, thank you, President Begin. We have a short presentation to share with you about our two-way bilingual immersion program. It will be presented to you by Dr. Veeth and our wonderful principals at Reynolds, San Luis Rey and Chavez. So Dr. Veeth, would you please open and welcome us all here? Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, board members, Dr. Battalion, community members. My name is Dalma Veeth, EL Coordinator. Happy to be here with my team, wonderful principals, and Dr. Lawrence. Oceanside Unified School District has a dual language immersion program. So if you can go to the next slide, please. And in dual language programs, instruction occurs in two languages. The two-way bilingual Spanish immersion program integrates native speakers of English and native speakers of a target language. In this case, it's Spanish, along with bilingual students for academic instruction. Students' language abilities are developed side by side with their knowledge of academic subject matter. The goals of the program are academic excellence in both languages, bilingualism and biliteracy, positive cross-cultural attitudes, greater self-esteem, college and career readiness, promoting a sense of community. Next slide, please, Ms. Hernandez.
So here you can see that the program began at Rouse in the thirteen fourteen school year with one kindergarten class. And by the nineteen twenty school year, we had two hundred and ninety-three students enrolled K five and the two-way bilingual immersion pathway expanded to Chavez Middle School as the students began their middle school education. Our district also opened a kindergarten two-way class at Garrison Elementary. This school year, San Luis Rey has a kindergarten class and a first grade class, and the program is now serving sixth and seventh sixth and seventh graders in middle school. In twenty-one twenty-two, we will have our first group of eighth graders and they will be provided the AP Spanish Language and Culture Course. As the students transition to high school, they will have some options. They can study a third language, enroll in concurrent college courses, or take the advanced placement in Spanish Language and Culture. Students also can earn the seal of biliteracy. Next slide, please.
A committee was convened to update the tool dual language TWBI Immersion Master Plan. The TWBI Committee included parents, teachers, and administrators. The committee met in January, February, and in March this year to provide edits and suggestions. The TWBI Master Plan updates will be incorporated and reside in the overall English learner master plan. This will ensure that English language learner programs are all represented within one document. A main focus area for the committee was updating the learning pathways from elementary to high school. For example, Benchmark adelante, which up until now had been primarily used at the elementary level, will now be used from kindergarten through grade seven. Then in grade eight, students will be enrolled in the AP Spanish Language and Culture Course. They will continue to work on becoming proficient in Spanish as the adopted curriculum incorporates a focus on Spanish language arts and grammar. Taking the AP Spanish Language and Culture Exam at the end of grade eight will allow students to earn college credits. Next slide, please. Our two-way bilingual program provides a clear and early pathway for our students to earn the state seal of biliteracy as students within the program meet most of the requirements for the state seal biliteracy even before entering high school. Students begin this journey by attending our early elementary immersion program offered at Reynolds and San Luis Rey Elementary Schools. Students receive ninety percent of instruction in Spanish at kindergarten and first grade. Spanish instruction then decreases ten percent each year until fifth grade. By fifth grade, students receive instruction fifty percent of the time in Spanish and fifty percent of the time in English. At the middle school level, students receive Spanish instruction in language arts and social science in grades eight, six through eight. In middle school, students will also have the opportunity to engage in early advancement by taking the AP Spanish Language and Culture Course. Students at the end of the school year will have the opportunity to take the AP Spanish Language and Culture Exam. Students who pass with a three or better may receive college-level foreign language credit. When entering high school, students may go on to take the AP Spanish Literature Course, as was mentioned, or other language or camp on campus, or concurrently enroll in Miracosta College, allowing students to graduate being trilingual while also earning the state seal biliteracy. This is an exciting possibility for our TWBI students. Next slide, please, Ms. Hernandez.
So this, I'm sorry, this slide shows a number of students enrolled at San Luis Rey and at Reynolds Elementary School. It also shows how many students came to Oceanside Unified from another district. At the elementary level, we currently have two hundred and fifty students enrolled in our two-way bilingual immersion classes. And this includes twelve who reside reside outside of our school district. There are approximately ten elementary students from the immersion program that are currently enrolled at Surfside. Next slide, please.
So this slide outlines the Spanish coursework for the dual language immersion program at the middle school level. This reflects a continuation of students' biliteracy development from K through five. Currently, students take a Spanish language arts class and their history class also in Spanish. And as stated earlier, in grade eight, students may now be able to take the AP Spanish Language and Culture Class. And this would allow students, upon passing the AP Spanish Exam, to earn college credit. The alignment of the curriculum that we have established in grades K all the way through eight helps to prepare students for high levels of proficiency in both Spanish and English. Next slide, please. So this bar graph shows the overall average of the achievement of our dual language students, specifically in the area of English Language Arts as of April of this year in comparison to their non-TWBI peers. In addition, the site level data that we have collected at the middle school shows that at semester one in sixth grade, our average overall GPA was a two point seven eight with seventy-five percent of our students earning a grade of C or better in just their Spanish content area classes, which are very rigorous, and that would include their Spanish Language Arts class and their Spanish History class. In seventh grade, the average GPA was a three point one six with over eighty-five percent of our students achieving a grade of C or better in their Spanish content area classes. Next slide, please.
As you can see, as you can see here in all grades K through seven, with the exception of fourth grade, students in the immersion program are earning more A, B, and C grades or better grades in secondary and earning more threes and fours or better grades in elementary as compared to the students in the traditional program, which is showed in red. So TWBI students are in blue and traditional students, students in the traditional program are in red. In grade two, for example, forty-five percent of the students in the TWBI program received threes and fours on their report cards, while twenty-seven percent of students in the traditional program received threes or fours on their report card for mathematics. It's important to keep in mind that It's important to keep in mind that this was a new pilot report card this year, and we did not get enough grades in the grade three to be able to make that comparison. Next slide, please.
We recognize our students in the immersion program through their ongoing participation throughout the program. For example, in kindergarten, students received the participation award. In grade five, students receive a certificate or a medallion. In grade eight, they may receive the certificate of a seal of biliteracy, and in high school, students may earn the seal of biliteracy. Next slide, please. We are proud to share that there were approximately a hundred and five seals of biliteracy that were earned this school year. At Oceanside High School, seventy-five students earned a seal of biliteracy in the Spanish language. At El Camino High School, sixty students earned a seal of biliteracy. Three were in French and fifty-seven were in the Spanish language. I would like to take a moment to thank the administrators, teachers, students, and families for participating in the dual-language TWBI immersion program in Oceanside. We are proud of the dedication and accomplishments and growth that has taken place since the inception back in two thousand thirteen. Thank you for your attention and your time.
Thank you to the entire team, Mrs. Hernandez, Mrs. Morgan, Dr. Aranda, and Dr. Vith. We appreciate that presentation.
And I alongside with Eleanor Evans, we're also on that stakeholder committee. I started as a parent and became a board member, so, and I have a son that's in the pioneer class of dual-language, and all I can say is the teachers in this program are phenomenal. A rigorous curriculum, they motivate the students, and it's a great program.
I will agree one hundred percent with that. It's excellent.
Right, I'll make a motion to approve.
We do have one public comment.
Oh, do we? Oh, let's hear it.
Michelle Krug.
Michelle. You're up.
Michelle, if you're speaking, you're on mute. And now I see you're off mute, so go ahead and proceed.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, it's the first time I'm speaking at this board meeting. I do applaud you for making it comparatively simple on Zoom. I do appreciate that. I want to speak to the dual-language. Well, actually, I want to say one other thing real quick, because I didn't sign up properly, I guess. That the, with the vaccines, the county is allowing any organization to go ahead and have the vaccines given, and since they are starting with twelve-year-olds now with Pfizer, that was actually a, that's an option to make it available. I know San Diego Unified is doing that at several of the high schools. On the dual-language, I, apparently you had a hundred and thirty-four students going, signing up that they, that their parents had an interest, and there are only two classes, is my understanding, at Reynolds and one at San Luis Rey. I would hope that you would reconsider this and create seven classes, six classes, so that all of the students that have an interest are able to do this. My, I'm helping my friend get her daughter enrolled. She will be in dual-language, whether we have to go to Vista or Carlsbad, or if we have to wind up going to a charter school, and people on that board know how much I do not like charter schools. But I am determined to help this child begin her school career with dual-language. It's critical. The things that you've said, I don't have to repeat them. They're really important. So I just would really, all we were told is there's no waiting list and, you know, sorry, no explanation as to why she was not accepted. And I would just like, I would appreciate it if there's something that can be done, waiting list, or if you would reconsider. I know I can organize twenty parents in any grade to get a bilingual class going. So if we have to do that, I'm just looking at all the options right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. So on that note, I'll ask, how many people do we have on a waiting list for Reynolds, San Luis Rey?
Dr. Begin, I'm unclear if we're talking about the summer programming or the full year. If we're talking about the summer programming, we're going to check into that and get you those numbers. And if we're talking about the regular year program, we do base that on student signup and request. So we're going to continue to monitor that, and I will be working with the principals to find that data and bring that back to you.
Thank you. All right, with no more questions or public comment, I'll call for the vote. All in favor.
We need to have a second.
Oh, we didn't get a second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, now second.
Just for further discussion, if we can expand that, I mean, that is a program that is bringing people in. So we should definitely take a close look at those numbers for upcoming meeting and keep other names of everybody who is applying.
And I do know it's really hard to find teachers that have the skill set to teach in the dual-language program.
Yes. It's challenging. I'm sorry.
Yes.
It is challenging, but one of our goals has always been to expand the program horizontally as well as vertically. Thank you, Dr. Levy.
Yes, Dr. Aranda just shared with me that we have twelve students enrolled in the summer programming right now with two. We're waiting to see how we can get the staffing to ensure that, and we'll continue to expand that to meet the need. And we will also be reaching out to the parent.
Great.
Thanks. So I have a first and a second with no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the approved approval of the revised dual-immersion two-way bilingual immersion master plan.
Hi.
Yeah, hi.
All right, motion carries five oh. Thanks for the presentation. Moving on, item D, approval of the twenty 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 twenty-one Local Control and Accountability Plan Federal Addendum.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. This is an approval of our federal addendum to our LCAP. This is a procedural opportunity for us so that we receive the funding through the Every Student Succeeds Act through the federal government. And this information is contained within our LCAP. The deadlines for it is a little bit sooner than we're going to be approving our LCAP in June. So as statute, we are putting this forward so that we continue to receive our Title I funds.
Thanks for the explanation. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
I have a first and a second from Mike and Eleanor. And any questions? Question? All right, all in favor of approving?
I.
Motion carries five oh. Moving on. To E, approval of independent contractor agreement with Mad Science for after-school hands-on science classes at Stuart Mesa, Santa Margarita, and North Terrace.
Yes, this is an item that is being funded by a Department of Defense grant. This is a DOD grant that's specifically targeted to meet the needs of our military-connected students in response.
Pretty good for me. I don't know about you guys.
Yes, and so we're continuing with that. It will be for an after-school program to expend funding that would otherwise have to be returned to the federal government Department of Defense. Again, it's targeted for our military-connected students.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
First and second. Any questions for staff? All in favor of item eight E approval?
Hi.
Motion carries five oh. Moving on to Student Services, nine. A, approval of inter-agency agreement with San Diego County Superintendent of Schools for past AmeriCorps gang and violence prevention services.
Thank you. We brought this contract forward last board meeting, and there was a question because the contract did include that our district would cover workers' compensation. The board had good questions around that. Dr. Sparks went back to the county, and the county did remove that portion. They are covering the workers' compensation for the past AmeriCorps volunteers. And again, this is an opportunity for us to have mentors and supports to our secondary students with young adults who've completed their either bachelor's or master's degree, kind of like a domestic Peace Corps.
Great. I'll, I'm motion to approve.
Can, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Would they also receive any type of credit towards a teaching credential? Or is this?
I don't know.
Okay. Because I know many AmeriCorps, I guess graduates do end up, do become teachers or something in education.
Yes, I think there's oftentimes they're interested in education, and they do. Dr. Spark has just shared with me that they do not receive credit, but they do get an educational stipend, a little bit like a small GI bill kind of thing for this service.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
That first and a second. All in favor of approving item E, or sorry, A, nine A? Yeah.
Hi.
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 Motion carries five oh. Nine B, approval of new course for Surfside High School Connections Intervention Support Course.
So this course is a course approval that has gone through the CAC to make sure that we have an opportunity to offer a specialized course for those students who are at Surfside Academy. This is a course that will provide surf guidance to students in social-emotional learning, digital skills, academic supports, focus on CTE and college readiness, and the students involved in this will have a graduation coach, which will stay with them until they graduate. And your approval of this course will allow for this innovative type of program to happen at our Surfside Academy to support our students.
You need a motion.
Sounds great.
Yeah, I think that's.
I'll move approval.
Thanks, Mike. First and second. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I just think it's a step forward towards transformational education. I think it's great.
Well, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Approving? I. Motion carries five oh. Next item on our agenda is eight, nine C, approval of memorandum of agreement with the San Diego County Office of Education for the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three migrant education program.
Yes, Board of Education, you may recall several board meetings ago, we entered into discussions with the County Office of Education. Over time, our migrant education program that mostly serves our children who are agricultural workers, children of agricultural workers, we've had a decline in that population, and we feel that we can no longer offer the robust services. But when we combine with San Diego County Office of Education with our local districts, we can offer a more robust and targeted program for the students. So this would make it so that the San Diego County Office of Education would provide those services in partnership with our other local North County districts for the next period from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Eleanor. Do I have a second? Okay. A second. I have a question for you, Dr. Levy. What happened to the staff that we had that were teaching in the migrant education program we had?
Oh, at, we did not have any teachers who were full-time. We had one classified employee in this program.
And they have a job now, or did they move somewhere else? How were they impacted?
I'm not aware of that at this time. I know.
Dr. Begin, there was, there is one classified employee that we've met with. This would be a layoff for that position, and we're working with them on options for other types of employment.
Right, thank you for the update. Right? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Ninety?
Hi.
Motion carries five oh. Next item, we're moving on to item eleven, business. Item A is a presentation and approval of the Third Interim Financial Report for the twenty 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 twenty-one school year and approval of Resolution Number Thirty-eight. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, President Begin. Tonight, we'll be presenting the Third Interim Financial Report. This report represents the financial status of the district as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, including adjustments to the adopted budget for actual beginning balances, revenue adjustments, and revised expenditures. Mr. Tim Golden, our Director of Fiscal Services, will provide information on the key changes to the adopted budget since second interim. In addition, he will provide information on our district's Title I supplemental and concentration funding.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. I will be presenting our third interim report. But first, just want to say good evening to the Board of Trustees and Superintendent Battalion. We will move on to the next slide, please. Looking at a quick overview of what we're going to talk about tonight, pretty similar to what the structure is for how we normally go through these presentations, but we will have a little detour to review our Title I and LCFF supplemental and concentration trends. So with that said, we'll dive right on in. Next slide, please. Couple of things to keep in mind here is that we are currently with a qualified status for our budget, and that we also have some of those factors that are impacting our budget that surround the LCFF base revenue and our special education underfunded mandates for those programs. Just a couple items that to keep in mind as we're going through these slides. So next slide, please. As we traditionally do, we look at the progression from each reporting period. So in this presentation or this slide here, you're going to see what our budgets were at each stage of our reports. And in that, excuse me, sorry, far-right column, the difference between our second interim and our third interim is going to be outlined. And you'll see some large amounts there, but we'll go into the details on our next slide. Looking at the changes in revenue, not much changed here except the federal and state portions. And I just want to show you those big-ticket items are going to be as a result of the federal and state money that are coming in with the second stimulus, the CURSA, as was referred to last night, C R R S A, and then also the AB eighty-six grant that came out. So we also had the in-person instruction grant and the expanded learning opportunities grant, and those both came from AB eighty-six. But those are going to be the largest changes from that second interim in terms of the revenue. And we're just putting that on, and most of these will carry over as was mentioned in previous presentations, that this is a multi-year plan with the funding. So. Next slide, please. So here's where we start our detour, and it's, it does relate to our LCFF revenue. It's the supplemental and concentration grant portion of the LCFF revenue. And essentially, what this funding is, is it's the instructional activities and services for the app-promised students. And this funding is going to be based on our district unduplicated pupil count. So often referred to as a UPC, the unduplicated pupil count is made up of our English learners, students from low-income households, which is measured by the free and reduced meal program as well as our homeless and foster youth students. Next slide, please. So I hope everybody's ready to do a little bit of math. We've got a problem here, which will show you the calculation for our supplemental and concentration grants. With that, I will tell you that we do need three things. We need our three-year unduplicated pupil percentage. So that's going to be done by ta, we can do that by taking our CALPADs, unduplicated pupil count, that UPC that I mentioned before. And then we're going to be dividing the three years by the three years of enrollment. So in this example here, we will take the line one on this slide, and we'll take eleven thousand one oh six, twelve thousand two seventy-nine, ten thousand one ninety-nine. We add up all three of those, and then we take that thirty-two thousand five eighty-four and divide it by the three years of enrollment, the fifty-one thousand two eighty-four. I outlined the difference in the calculation because you don't just take the average each year and add them up and divide them by three, because as you note on the lower side of this slide, it is a slight difference. Because as you note on the lower side of this slide, it is a slight difference by point oh two percent. And that might not mean a lot, but when you're looking at a hundred and sixty seven dollar, or a hundred and sixty seven million dollars. That can add up. So just being very clear on how that calculation comes into play. Which we get to the bottom there, which our three-year unduplicated pupil percentage, the UPP, is sixty three point five four percent. So I'll have you keep that number in mind as we move into the next section. So now that we have that three-year unduplicated pupil percentage, we're going to calculate our LCFF base funding. And so what you'll see here is our current year base rates as outlined in. Under the base rate column there. We're going to take the prior year rates for LCFF base rates by grade span here. And we're going to apply the COLA to that. So in this current year, we had a zero percent COLA. So essentially what our LCFF base rates are, are what the, the same as what they were last year. So we're looking at the same rates for the base as they were last year. And so that's where the COLA gets applied in the LCFF. Now, on top of that, there are grade span adjustments, which are outlined in the next column there. And there's two of those. There's one that's for the K through three, which is ten point four percent of the base rate for that grade span. And in order to be eligible for that, you must meet the statutory requirement of twenty four to one in the class sizes. For those, um, for those grades. Or if you have a collectively bargained agreement that outlines a different number than that would take precedence. So in this example, you can take the base rate seven seven zero two and multiply that by ten point four percent. And that gets you to the eight oh one for the grade span adjustment there. Likewise, we would do the same for the nine to twelve grade span adjustment, which is no requirements associated with that one. That's just going to be the two point six percent. So when you take the nine thousand three hundred and twenty nine. And apply that two point six, that's where we get the two hundred and forty three. Those numbers combined make up our prorated base rate. And then the final piece there is our funded ADA. And our funded ADA is our funded average daily attendance, which is based on our current year P two attendance report. Which is going to show what our average daily attendance is for the current year. And we're going to take the greater of that or the prior year's P two average daily attendance. So when you're in declining enrollment, we're going to be taking oftentimes the prior year P two average daily attendance. Now this year, we did get an ADA hold harmless, but that hold harmless really is no different than if we were to go ahead and take the prior year. In our situation, it, what it will do is it will help us in the next year, we're twenty one, twenty two. Where we can then utilize that hold harmless without seeing a drop off in that twenty one, twenty two year. That will come up later in our presentation when we will actually have to look at what the changes were with declining enrollment for this year. But we'll visit that in a future slide. But looking at what we have here now, we have the funded ADA numbers, which are going to be from our prior year, um, average daily attendance. By grade span. We also have that prorated base. And so to get the, um, the base entitlement, we're going to basically work left to right here. And we're going to multiply our funded ADA by each grade span by the prorated base. So that's going to be the second to last column you see there, which will result in the grade span amounts for our base LCFF. Which comes up to that one hundred and forty million dollar number. Next slide, please. So now we've got two of the components that, uh, or all three of those components that we needed. We needed the three-year unduplicated pupil percentage. We needed the LCFF base entitlement. And now, um, we can basically take this information and calculate what the supplemental and concentration portion is. So I've outlined on this slide here, we're taking that one hundred and forty million. We're going to then calculate on line eleven of this slide, the supplemental amount. And every district that has, uh, unduplicated pupils will receive supplemental, uh, constant, or supplemental grant funding. And so in order to get this amount here, we're going to take the base funding, that one hundred and forty million. And we're going to multiply it by that three, uh, that three-year unduplicated pupil percentage. And then we're going to multiply that number by twenty percent. That's the standard amount that is, that every district gets for supplemental. Grant funding. So we're taking the one hundred and forty million, we're multiplying it by that sixty three point five four percent from the earlier slide that I. Uh, asked you to kind of keep that in your mind. And then we're going to multiply that number by twenty percent. And that's, this is where the seventeen point eight million dollars in our supplemental. LCFF money is coming from. Now, the concentration grant, um, not quite as simple of a calculation. So what this, the main difference that you're going to see here on the calc- calculation for concentration. Is that you only get funded at your unduplicated pupil percentage above the threshold. The threshold is fifty five percent. So I've, at the very bottom of this, I have the note of how I calculated our, uh, threshold above, our, our amount above the threshold. So that's a sixty three point five four less the fifty five percent to give us the eight point five four percent. So it's the base funding, once again, a hundred and forty million times that amount above the threshold, which is going to be the eight point five four percent. Times fifty percent. And that fifty percent is what every district gets in terms of, uh, the concentration above their. Their UPP threshold there. So that's going to yield almost six million dollars, that five point nine million dollar number. Moving forward.
I'm sorry, before you, before you go on. So for every percentage point we lose in our percentages above fifty five percent. It's a little less than like a million dollars. Is that a, a back of the hand, like? Concentration funding?
Yeah, close to that, yeah. But it's also factored on a three-year average. So if you have one year that goes down a little bit and you recover in that second year, that kind of helps soften that curve. So, um, it, that three-year average helps districts when you have one year that might been, have been a rough year. Uh, opposed to, um, another year. And there are, there are statutes that would allow for, if you do drop below, there's different. Things you can do, but just below that fifty five percent, but that's probably very much in the weeds there. Anyhow, I'll, I'll go to the next slide there. And so what we're going to do here now is put it all together. Uh, I've kind of tried to lay the bricks here for us to follow. And, uh, we calculated the, uh, the base LCFF entitlement, that one hundred and forty million. The supplemental and concentration, we went right down, um, where we needed to, to get those numbers. And the final piece of this LCFF calculation for the revenue is there's a couple add-ons, the, um, uh, it, a couple old programs. That were around during the categorical times, um, in two thousand twelve and thirteen. And that's the, uh, Targeted Instructional Improvement Block Grant, the TIG, um, and the Home to School Transportation. And these rates are not applied to the COLA. So anytime we get a COLA, it is not applied to any add-on. These add-ons are just set from whatever the program was at that time from two thousand twelve, thirteen. We get that amount, um, as far as we know, um, going forward. So that brings us to the total there of a hundred and sixty seven million for our LCFF. But that's in a very probably quick, in my mind, um, calculation of how we get to, uh, the LCFF. Uh, revenue and how the supplemental and concentration factors into that. Next slide, please. And so when looking at the trend here of each year, uh, we've provided the cost of living adjustment, that COLA for each of those years. And then I've also provided what our supplemental and concentration grant amounts have been over the course of time. And you'll see slight increase, a little bit of larger increase. And then in the current year, that's going to be a decrease. And it's compounded in this situation because, uh, we had some declining. Uh, unduplicated pupil count numbers, as well as there's a zero percent COLA. So sometimes when that COLA is applied to LCFF, it softens the blow of having a decrease in your unduplicated pupil percentage. So as a result, this year we were kind of compounded with declining of our UPC, unduplicated pupil count. And our, uh, zero percent COLA, so nothing was applied. So that's where we're looking at, uh, some of those changes. And that's where the fluctuation in the funding, as I've noted here, uh, surrounds the student enrollment, the COLA, the cost of. Living adjustment there, and then also the number of those eligible, uh, free and reduced lunch application families. Next slide, please. Looking at the current year in terms of how our applications were, um, or how we got to our unduplicated pupil numbers. The COVID or COVID, uh, presented a lot of issues as, uh, everybody is well aware. But one of the things that happened was the federal government, they provided, the USDA, provided a waiver on districts. And allowed them to operate under the seamless summer option. So, uh, SSO, because we love acronyms. And what this basically did was it allowed us to offer free meals to all children eighteen or under that were. Either eighteen or under, or they were enrolled in our district. So there was no application or any identification required. They would just, uh, show up to our sites where we had the meals. And they would be able to, uh, receive those meals. Next slide, please. Here, uh, is where the state steps in and under, uh, the direction of CDE, they did not want districts to solicit free and reduced meal applications. Largely because there was a federal waiver, and so they didn't want districts to continue to go out and solicit this on. When there was a waiver out. So what they did was they offered us, um, a different solution, which was to try to cr- um, collect the annual family information form. And they didn't release this out until about late November of twenty twenty. And the deadline for all of these was at the end of December. So, uh, a pretty quick timeline there. And typically these forms are only completed by families at two of our schools, that's Mission and Jefferson. And that's, uh, largely because that these students are, um, are these schools are community eligibility provision schools. Uh, which is a program within our nutrition, uh, department. Where they can take the, they can collectively group schools. And if those schools have an identified student percentage of forty percent or higher, then they can go ahead and categorize all those students. As, uh, free meals, but that's only for the nutrition program. We would still need this annual family, um, information form. For us to mark that on our LCFF unduplicated pupil, uh, count. So it's a little bit tricky, uh, as we get into some of those programs. But, um, one of the main things to highlight with this is that in the current year, families were receiving our free meals. Regardless of whether they had filled out an application or, uh, annual family information form, they were still getting those benefits. And so as a result, uh, there really isn't much of an incentive for families to complete any application. Or, uh, um, information form in regards to our nutrition program. So that made it very difficult and most districts had the same issue, uh, surrounding maintaining their. Their rates for their unduplicated pupil counts, because there was no waiver on the unduplicated pupil count. There was only a waiver on the average daily attendance, that ADA. So this was one of the main problems that most districts faced, um, this year surrounding the. Unduplicated pupil counts. So looking to the next slide. We will kind of navigate a little bit in a different direction with our Title One funding. And the reason being is that Title One funding is based on the count of students that are eligible for low income. That are ages five to seventeen. And so information from those lunch, those meal applications and those family, annual family information forms. Are, are recorded for both Title One purposes and for our, uh, LCFF purposes. So there's multiple, uh, layers to that. So looking at when this is collected is, is usually, um, the same timing as when we collect our free and reduced lunch applications. Which is at the end of October each year. Um, and that goes into our Fall One submission that goes to the state in December. Next slide, please. And this is just a little bit of a highlight of what the two different forms look like in terms of, uh, what our nutrition department collects. Is the free and reduced meal program. So they collect lunch applications, but then they also collect the annual family information form. Um, and both of these go into, uh, our numbers for our Title One. But the free and reduced meal program, those applications actually will qualify students or families for access to meals. Based on, uh, income levels, where the annual family information form, as mentioned before, is part of already, uh. A community eligibility provision, which is another net, and those students have already qualified for the, for the, uh, meals. They just haven't provided the information to, uh, show that each of them could be marked as an unduplicated pupil. Next slide, please. So on this slide here, we're looking at what the eligibility scale is. So, uh, just picking a number out of a hat here for a household size of four, we're looking at about an annual income of about thirty four thousand. Uh, and that's what it would, uh, require for a family to qualify. And this number is updated annually and, uh, it's usually on the, uh, CDE website as well. Moving forward. Looking at the history of our Title One funding, uh, as kind of shown with the supplemental and concentration. Uh, I've shown what our allocation has been over the for, uh, the course of the last few years, uh, some slight changes to it. Uh, and really what can cause the fluctuation here, uh, somewhat similar to supplemental and concentration, where it's student enrollment. Um, and the number of free and eligible, free and reduced eligible, uh, applications. But then also the federal budget allocation. So at the federal level, if they decide they want to cut their allocation for Title One. That's going to have a domino effect down to each school site. And so there's a smaller pie for everybody to, uh, to pick from there. Moving forward. So looking at next steps, we've kind of talked about what the meal application process has looked like in this current COVID year. Uh, what might it look like in next year? So looking at the seamless summer option, it has been extended through the end of next school year as well. So that's through twenty one, twenty two. What that means is that students aren't going to have to, uh, pay anything to receive meals. And that the CDE is still recommending that, uh, schools don't solicit the free and reduced meal applications. So what that means is we will look towards the annual family information form. And one of the things that we are exploring is doing that during our registration and data confirmation in Aries. To make that a digital process, hopefully streamlining a few things and making it easier for our families. But then also, uh, we'll pass this information along to the state to make sure that we're getting that funding. But also that students might be out identified for other government programs that, uh, could be beneficial to those families. And, uh, in, in the event that we haven't received the annual family information form, we will have, uh, school sites reach out to those families to make sure that. Um, that their needs are also being met and, uh, to see if they might fill out that form for us. Next slide, please. Alright, so we are back on track here with, uh, the expenditures. Um, looking at what the changes were in detail for what our budget looked like from third interim. Uh, from second interim to third interim. A couple of things to note here is looking at the, uh, certificated salaries they bumped up as a result of some of the federal and state money that came in. The intervention support is going to be, um, a good portion of that. But one of the other items that you'll see is pretty large here is the books and supplies. I just want to caution you that that's just a temporary placeholder. And, uh, as we're forming these plans, as you heard last night with the, uh, Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. They, our plans are being developed and we're taking, um, any advice that we can get from our schools, our stakeholders, and then of course, the board. To put those into our budget initiatives. So once we have that plan finalized, we can start dispersing this budget across, uh, other line items. So that's just a temporary placeholder that you, uh, can see there on the books and supplies. Next slide, please. Looking at the components of the ending fund balance as we do with, uh, some of the other slides, we look at that progression here of the ending fund balance. And, uh, the key here is looking at the focus in restricted funding. Um, and that our commitment to try to spend that money first. And then, um, the, the final piece on this is the increase in the reserve requirement. Because, uh, as I've continuously, uh, mentioned. Our reserve is based on our total general fund expenditure. So as our budget increases on the general fund as a whole. Then that requirement obviously is going to come up to that, uh, five percent there. So, uh, as we implemented and, and, um, put in some of these federal and state dollars. That bumped up our budgets for the current year. And so that reserve requirement also, uh, enough with that. So some of these things are in the, in our budget right now, but they will carry over. So, uh, as mentioned before, they, this, these funds are multi-year. Um, and so we're, we're supposed to be using them. We get them one time in nature, but they're supposed to last us, um, through the expenditure period. So next slide, please. And one more, please. So we'll look at the multi-year projection and a couple of the assumptions that we've, uh, implemented or used in our multi-year projection is that current year, we do know that that's not really an assumption, our COLA is zero percent. The, uh, COLA is three point eight four percent, or it's projected at three point eight four percent for next year. That might go slightly up. Once we get the May revision out, we'll have a better number to use for, uh, our projections. But, uh, we're also factoring in any, um, adjustments for, uh, enrollment decline and, uh, all those items that go with that. So moving to the next slide here. Looking at our multi-year projection here, the three-year, uh, projection, you'll notice, in this slide, the key part is going to be the additional, um, reductions in order for us to meet our reserve in that final year. And that's going to largely be due to our decrease in the LCFF. Earlier I mentioned that we have a hold harmless on ADA. And as I mentioned, since we're declining enrollment, we're normally taking our prior year, um, average daily attendance. And so what happens is, is we got to hold harmless and that will help us in twenty-one, twenty-two, because normally we would have taken twenty to twenty-one. And so it gives us a fail safe in that one year, but then, uh, in that twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, we have to then take either the current year ADA or what our actual ADA was in twenty-one, twenty-two. So in the upcoming year, we'll either take that ADA or whatever our ADA is in that third year out, the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And so there's a decrease in LCFF funding in that year, um, compounded with, uh, you know, the, the STIRS, PERS, um, benefit rate increases among other things. So right now, let's looking at about four point nine million in that third year of, uh, additional expenditure reductions. Next slide, please. The multi-year fund balances, so like we showed the, um, the revenues expenditures, we're going to look at the ending fund balances, uh, or the components of that. And so you'll see what that progression looks like. We're not able to assign anything in that third year out. And we would be, uh, still short, as you can see, um, in our, uh, reserve, our, our ending fund balance gets down to about seven point seven million. So, um, as mentioned before, that average daily attendance hold harmless will really impact us in that twenty-two, twenty-three year when we no longer have that protection. Next slide, please. And one more. So looking at a fa, uh, fiscal stabilization, we're going to continue our ongoing commitment to try to align our staffing with our declining enrollment as well as evaluate ongoing expenditures that we can do, that we can find for possible reductions so that we can, uh, maintain our fiscal solvency. And the following slide, please. So what we're looking at here in the next steps, uh, for the board is to adopt the third interim as, uh, still as the qualified budget, uh, and that we're going to continue to work with our, uh, our friends over at SDCOE to try to make sure that we're in compliance and that we are making the best moves that we can, um, moving forward as well as we'll be paying close attention to the governor's May revise, which will start, um, building out our adopted budget for our projection. And that, uh, will be it. If there's any questions, then please let me know.
Colleagues, do you have any questions for that very thorough presentation? Thanks.
I, I loved it. That was, that was fantastic. Are we permitted to incentivize, uh, those forms coming in? Can we offer some kind of incentives to get those forms back? Because you said a natural incentive that is usually there, which would be enrollment in the free and reduced lunch program is gone. And we're in this for this year and, and I love that you're thinking like, let's get it in the door with as soon as students step on campus. But are there other ways that we can pull in those students? Because how much is it for, I mean, in, in this year's cycle, for every student that we would have identified as our unduplicated pupil, it's thousands of dollars, correct? That will be impacting the budget?
Yes, it, it, it would be part of that three-year average, basically. But yes, it could impact thousands, yes.
And so the other piece is it's going to be so incredibly important for us to capture students next year, because if that number is even lower, then we're going to be forced to go with this year's number. And so next year becomes a very high stakes game as far as capturing and retaining students in our district. I think we have to put everything we can into reaching out to those parent, those kinder parents that are looking around right now. Like we need to be getting them views of, of what the classrooms look like. I think we have to build out that network. I know this is, now we're really tired, but it's going to, it's going to, it's going to crush us if we have bad numbers next year. From everything that Timothy just presented, it, it's devastating to the future of the district. So investment in getting these kids in the door next year, getting families to see all the amazing things that our principals and our teachers are doing is critical, is, is everything. So I just really want us to think about that as the next couple of months go along, investing a lot in this fall and capturing and pulling in community members that might be thinking about other districts. And making sure those counts of unduplicated pupils. And also something I brought up before, our homeless and foster youth are undercounted compared to some of our other districts around. What can we do to, again, capture that number of students more accurately or more fully? Are we looking at students that are living in multiple family households? And how are we capturing that?
Mr. Joyce, we continue, um, in student services. Thank you, Mr. Golden. I know that you, uh, rely on student services and ESS to, uh, find students and enroll them. Uh, we are looking at ways that we can better capture, um, and identify our families who may be experiencing homelessness and also temporary, uh, doubling up. So we have some ideas. Dr. Sparks is working with our team, um, with our administrative team at the sites. What we also know, um, from past, uh, practice is that about two years ago, we made a very concerted effort to address and identify all students who hadn't turned in the free and reduced lunch, um, uh, application. And so what we did is a collaborative effort and each principal reached out, teachers reached out, said, hey, we want to make sure you have this opportunity. And I'll tell you as a former site leader, a former principal, the biggest thing is when a teacher says, hey, you know what? This is important. When a principal says, hey, this is important. And through actual or virtual work, um, our principals are doing morning messages, which are very well received. We have smores newsletters. So we believe that through these types of communicating to families, the importance of filling out that form and what that means to us through, um, both the money and the resources we can provide with the money, oftentimes families are very receptive. So families, I've often taught to them about the fact that, you know, a bake sale or other fundraiser may raise ten, you know, you know, maybe your family helps with, you know, purchasing fifty dollars versus something. But if you explained that filling out this form will result, result in hundreds of dollars for your child's school, families are very motivated. So we know that that personal touch is essential and we're definitely working in partnership, um, across our district and our principals are very aware of that.
But I think in part of that, though, sorry, Eric, I didn't want to cut you off, but...
No, you're probably going to say the same thing.
We need to remember though, that the, in, in filling those forms out, there's a lot of confusion that goes with filling those forms out. Cause I know when I would help with registration and things, sitting and you would sit with each parent to do the registration forms, especially in Kinder. And now with TK being what it is and growing those programs, we need to make sure that we're actually connecting and getting them to fill out those forms because so many of them just bypass it because it's always something I'll fill out later and we never get them and we miss them. And we did that for a couple of times already and it's, it's huge. It, it affects us in a big way.
So I, I agree with you and what we're trying to do is make that a streamlined effort as, um, Mr. Golden said, and make it a really simple process within Ares that is either a forced pop-up or it requires the parent to at least acknowledge that they've seen it. And then we can come back on the backend when we see that parents may have gone past it and not filled it out, then we can follow up. But I agree with you, um, Mrs. Alvarez, especially for families with multiple kids. Sometimes it is just another form to fill out. And so we're really trying to streamline it and make it as simple as possible moving into the next year with the data confirmation process.
Right, right. We already had that where it was a pop-up. Cause when I did the registration, it was already part of a pop-up. They had, they had to acknowledge it, but they still didn't do it or they didn't understand it. So they just pushed it aside and they never did it. So there needs to be a different way or we need to make sure that when they're registering, that somebody is there to truly be there to help them to do this, to do this registration or whatever the process is that we're going to be doing it in. Because they will need the help because especially when it's multiple children, because they're not understanding if it's for each kid. And it does require for each and everything else. So we have, so that pop-up, again, we've had it. It didn't work obviously because we didn't capture the numbers the way that we needed to.
Right, I believe you're correct. And I believe the pop-up just took you to a website and what we're trying to do is actually embed it into Ares. But you're right. And I do think that even though there's some schools that are aware of what the annual family income form, there's different names for it. Sometimes the name alone would turn people off to filling it out. And so our goal is to really make sure that our school community advisors, our principals, our teachers understand the importance and relevance of the form this year and do exactly what you've just articulated to make sure that it gets filled out. But I agree.
Again, I think it circles back to the in-person contact with somebody who is trusted in most cases you brought up as the teacher. And we talked about this a little bit yesterday, having that personal interaction early in the year that brings their attention in a in-person setting to these things that are critical to, I mean, it's not just, it's not critical to the budget, it's critical to the education of their kids. So I, you know, I hope that we're looking at ways to do personalized reach outreach at the beginning of the year, um, hand in hand, like right there. That's what, having it in our website isn't, isn't enough for so many of our families. The other, uh, so do we have a, do we have a system that alerts us if multiple children live in the same household? I don't know. There's got to be a system and we can hear about it another time, but of finding those students that are double housed, because I think that's a big space that we're underutilized under the, um, homeless population. Okay, that's all I, thank you so much.
That's a good idea, Eric. Um, all right, I'll take a, I'll make a motion to approve item eleven.
Um, I'll make a motion. You made a motion, Stacy?
Yeah, I did.
I'll second, I'll second. I do want to make a comment on the second though. Um, you know, keep in mind the big picture here. We just got a math lesson and all the weeds of this stuff and that was, uh, very helpful. But the bottom line is, I mean, for years, we've been in the qualified budget scenario. That third year outnumber was thirty million dollars, twenty million dollars. I think I pointed out last, um, at second interim, there's down to seven million. And this one, we're at four point nine million. So we're, things are going in the right direction in the big picture in terms of getting us out of those things. All of the efforts you're talking about and then some help towards that for sure. But the district's going in that right direction fundamentally. And even though we probably still have structural issues going on and we'll have, um, the bottom line is getting better through all these quarterly and, uh, I mean interim reports each year. So please note that, um, when you're talking with your folks.
Thanks. All right, with no more discussion, um, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of accepting item eleven A? Hi?
Hi.
Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Mr. Golden, for the presentation. Item eleven B, approval of annual commission installment premium to Kenan and Associates for supplemental employee retirement plan.
Thank you. The supplemental employee retirement plan, also known as the SERP, on September twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen, the Board of Education adopted resolution number ten to approve a supplemental employee retirement plan or SERP with Kenan and Associates. They provide annuities to eligible employees through a tax-qualified four oh three B program over five years or less. The cost of the annuities funded by the district's plan includes a fee payable to Kenan and Associates for his service and administrators of the SERP. The commission amount is equal to five percent of the total annual installment premium. Kenan's fees are billed separately outside of the cost of the annuities for each year for five years. This is the fourth of five annual payments for the annual commission installment premium. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the annual commission installment premium to Kenan and Associates in the amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars for the SERP.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Motion carries five oh. Moving right along, item eleven C, approval of OUSD Expanded Learning Opportunities ELO Grant Plan.
Thank you. On March fifth, twenty-twenty-one, Governor Newsom signed into law ABSB eighty-six, which provides new funding for LEAs using Proposition ninety-eight funds. Part of the additional funding is called the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant, which we call the ELO Grant. It apply and allows for flexibility with implementing learning recovery programs across the district. allocations of funds are based on the LCFF formula entitlement. To determine appropriate expenditures under the ELO Grant, OUSD site principals facilitated site-level meetings with teachers, classified employees, and OUSD community members, families to solicit feedback regarding site priorities for use for the allotted funding. This feedback was then utilized by district staff to design the ELO Grant Plan to provide supplemental instruction and support to identified students based on seven specific strategies. This plan was also reviewed in last night's board study session. Upon approval of the ELO Grant Plan, the plan will be forwarded to the San Diego County Office of Education for approval and submission. OUSD anticipates receiving funding during May twenty-twenty-one and August twenty-twenty-one for a total allotment of eleven million, seven hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars. Funds will be available for use through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Is recommended for approval of the ELO Grant.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second. For a second, do we have any questions?
For the, uh, I'm just making sure I'm not mixing it up. I thought yesterday when we talked about, um, establishing community schools within our boundaries, that the ELO Grant would be, was one of the funding sources identified for doing so. Is that, is that correct? Or will we look at a broader, at the broader COVID funding?
My understanding in our meeting yesterday was that was an area that we were going to explore. Dr. Vitale, did you want to?
Uh, no, that also was not, uh, my understanding. My understanding was that we were going to look into extended services through Vista Community Clinic. I, I did not understand that we set forth community schools last evening.
Well, I'll bring it forward in a, in a later board meeting then, if that's what everybody else understood.
Yeah, all right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of accepting this yellow grant petition? Hi?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion carries five oh. Hang in there, board colleagues, we're almost done. We've got some policy development now. These are all different board policies we're going to go through. Um, the first one is item twelve A, adopt resolution number thirty-nine, proclaiming May twenty-twenty-one as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage, Heritage Month.
Move approval.
Oh, is there a presentation?
Sorry.
Yeah, is there a presentation or you just need a motion?
Eric, can you read it? Do you have it in front of you by any chance?
I, I, I do have it pulled up, so I'll, I'll, I'll read it. And I apologize for my late night read alouds as a teacher and definitely should be better at this. Whereas the Asian American and Pacific Islander American community is an inherently diverse population composed of more than forty-five distinct ethnicities and more than one hundred language dialects. Whereas California is the home to the largest population of Asian Americans, a group that has enriched the state in countless and invaluable ways. And whereas the state of California is home to one point four million students in kindergarten through twelfth grade who are Asian and Pacific Islander. And whereas more than fifty-two thousand students in San Diego County public schools are of Asian and Pacific Islander descent. And whereas in nineteen seventy-seven, the Congress introduced House Resolution to proclaim the first ten days of May as Asian Pacific Heritage Week, a celebration of Asian and Pacific Islanders in the United States. And whereas in nineteen ninety, Congress voted to expand Asian Pacific heritage from one week to a month-long celebration in May nineteen ninety-two. The month of May was permanently designated as Asian Pacific
The month of May was permanently designated as Asian American and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month. And whereas, understanding Asian and Pacific Islander history is an important part of celebrating Asian and American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander communities enhanced, enhance the rich, the rich diversity and strength in the United States. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have endured and overcome hardship, heartache. And in this year especially, have felt fear for themselves and their loved ones in the wake of anti-Asian hate and acts of violence against people in the Asian and Pacific Islander communities. And whereas these communities face inequities today that have roots in our country's history with the Chinese Exclusion Act of eighteen eighty two and the internment of Japanese Americans during the World War Two. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have persevered, creating opportunities for their children and making advances in our country through the arts, science, technology, law, agriculture, industry, and commerce, and public service, such as healthcare and the military. And whereas we acknowledge the historical and cultural contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Americans in the development of the state of California for their contributions to government and our nation, both nationally and locally in San Diego County. And whereas celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month provides the people of the United States with an opportunity to recognize the achievements and contributions and the history of and to understand the challenges faced by Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Oceanside Unified School Board of Education does hereby proclaim May twenty twenty one as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Okay, so this is a resolution that requires a vote?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Eric, for reading that.
Thank you, Eric. I'll make a motion to accept this resolution.
Second. You have a first and a second? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Well, we have the, oh, go ahead.
Will we have the opportunity to sign the resolution?
Uh, yes, the resolution requires signing. So, uh,
Can the entire board sign the resolution?
Sure, we will make it so that the entire board signs the resolution. That's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy, I just have one thing to add. I just want to share that just this year, there was a book published. Um, and it's called The Girl in the Gold Dress. You can't see it. I should have had a little thingy that Greg could have brought up. Anyway, it was written by a local San Diego employee, Christine Paig, and it's a beautiful story about the Korean heritage. And basically Christine is the Matthew in the Poway School District. And she wrote this book and it was illustrated by her mother. It is a beautiful story and we are going to buy a copy of this book to put in all of our libraries so that all Korean students can see themselves represented in the curriculum, which is a pri- priority of this board. So please look for that in your school libraries coming soon.
Is it possible, maybe, I know the curriculums are tight, but have it as a read aloud in every classroom?
I think the teachers have access to it if it's in the library, so we'll leave it up to them.
It's just one copy per school, twenty three copies, twenty four copies.
At this time, it's one copy. We were super excited to be able to do that. Um, we have spent a lot of money in our libraries, which we'll be sharing later in June. Um, but, uh, of course, if teachers choose to do that, they could do that. Anne Gibbons, uh, read the story last evening and she's going to read it to her grandchildren because it's just that beautiful of a story. So we will have the opportunity for people to do that, should they choose to do that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, I'm appreciative of you doing that. So thank you.
All right. So we're going to move on. The next several items on the agenda are approval of replacements to board policies. So we'll kind of go through these systematically. Twelve B, approval of replacement of board policy three two six zero fees and charges.
Dr. Begin, this policy is being updated to add a new section on the collection of debt reflecting new law AB nineteen seventy four, which prohibits negative action against a student or former student for a debt owed to the school and requires districts to provide parents and guardians with an itemized invoice that references applicable district policies. After reviewing CSBA's newest and most updated version with the district and with our council, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve this proposed replacement policy.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can you explain that? I know that, um, when I was in high school, I paid for a lot of students for their missing lost books, school materials, just so they could walk across the stage. Is, are we saying we're just going to forgive the debt?
What we're, yeah, basically, we can't withhold grades. We can't withhold opportunities from kids. We can't withhold educational experience. There's very specific guidelines now as to what we can charge students for. And we also have to take into account the student socioeconomic background. But it's very specific now. It's a much longer policy. It was rather, I think it was a one pager before, and now it goes into much more detail about what we can and cannot charge for. So you're correct, Sevens.
All right, I made a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor of approving item twelve B?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries five oh. I'm just keeping you guys on track, sorry.
Doing a great job.
The item twelve C, approval of replacement of board policy three two eight oh, sale or lease of district-owned real property.
Thank you. This, this policy is especially relevant to Oceanside right now because we do have so many properties that we are selling. What the great news is, is that we've been operating under the new policy because we consult legal and they give us direction. And so we have been following the law. So we had a great question come forward is really how is this different? What are the ramifications for our current actions? And there aren't any because we are following this law. So I'll just give you the highlights on what this policy changes for us. It's being updated to reflect the new law SB eight twenty, which adds an exception to the requirements that boards appoint an advisory committee. We call that our seven eleven committee for the sale or lease of the district-owned property. If the property has not been operated as an early childhood education facility for an elementary or secondary instruction. This update also reflects new law SB ninety eight with, which authorizes until July two twenty twenty four the proceeds from the sale or lease of property purchased entirely with local funds to be used for any one-time general fund purpose if certain conditions are met. And that's outlined in the policy, what those conditions are. The policy also adds information regarding authorization for boards to meet in closed session with real property negotiators. In addition, the policy includes the requirement to notify the Office of Public School Construction within ninety days if the district sells property that utilized funds received from a state school facilities program within the previous ten years. When these proceeds are not used for specified purposes, the policy outlines the conditions when the State Allocation Board, also known as the SAB, may require the funds to be returned. Lastly, the policy also includes material regarding update, updates to the Surplus Lands Act. After reviewing CSBA's newest and most updated version with the District Council, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve proposed replacement.
Thank you for that explanation. I'll make a motion to approve. All right, I got a first. I got a second for Mike. Any questions? Right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, thank you. Moving on. That passed five oh. Next one, twelve D, approval of replacement of board policies. Here we go. Four one one two point four two, four two one two point four two, four three one two point four two on drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers.
Or, or consideration, this is CSBA's new policy on prohibit, prohibit prohibiting drug and alcohol use for school bus drivers. And this new, uh, policy clarifies that alcohol testing be conducted on federal testing program and follows federal laws on confidentiality and testing results and also reporting to the Department of Motor Vehicles, among other new updates.
Thanks. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries five oh. Next item twelve E, approval of replacement of board policies for one one nine point two one, four two one nine point two one, and four three one nine point two one on professional standards.
This item specifically addresses employee conduct and addressing interactions with students and identifying the levels of what are considered inappropriate conduct to reflect current law. There are fourteen new updates in this that replaces previous language.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions?
The language, inappropriate employee conduct includes but is not limited to. That's a, like a broad, is that the rec, that's, this is the recommended CSBA language?
This is directly from CSBA. These are the fourteen points. They're mostly reflected what we would see in ed code as well. Uh, but it does cover some of the new laws that are out there in terms of protecting students. So it addresses things like, um, you know, fraternization with students or soliciting or maintaining inappropriate contact with students. So there's just some updated language uh, that strengthens that for what's considered inappropriate conduct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries five oh. Moving right along, twelve F, approval to revision of board policy five one four five point six and exhibit five one four five point six on parental notifications.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. This is an update to the language on our parent notifications. Every year, we send parent notifications describing to parents their rights and responsibilities in relation to attending public schools. This will remove obsolete language related to school of choice and update, um, the notification to reflect the Title Nine Coordinator and so that families will know where to report Title Nine incidences.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thanks. Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries five oh. Last one, twelve G, approval of revision to board policy five one four five point seven on sexual harassment.
Yes, board, this revision to the board policy will update it to reflect current language around sexual harassment, including updating students, providing posters, and identifying Title Nine coordinators for reporting of sexual harassment by students and or staff. So approval of this will align with current language in CSBA recommended, uh, for policies.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. I also have a question. This also covers, um, taxing or sexting, whatever it's called.
That could be among the things that it would cover, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, item twelve G?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries five oh. My favorite part of the night, second favorite, the students are my favorite. So second favorite is public comment. And we have a total of three public comments. So I'll just remind you, you have three minutes and it looks like we have Victoria Mariani first.
Yay.
All right, you have three minutes, Victoria.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm fifth grade teacher Victoria Mariani. I'm here tonight to express my frustration, disappointment, and utter confusion about the district's change to the elementary school Wednesday schedule. My entire class of thirty three students agree with me that this change is not only totally unnecessary, but is downright absurd, considering that there are only twenty something days left in the school year. Because of COVID restrictions, my entire class is only together during Wednesday virtual instruction. We use these days to hear from each student in our class as well as to celebrate stellar students who earn the distinction of Student of the Month. My principal, Dr. Aranda, has participated in several of these ceremonies and she had this to say about her observations there, and I quote, "I can't say enough about what I am witnessing in your class. The community that you are building is inspirational. You increase student engagement by your high expectations, unconditional positive rapport, routines, and celebrations. Peers recognizing each other in such heartfelt ways is authentic and powerful. Students must feel special, whether they being, whether they are being recognized in the moment or not. These elements are characterized by meaningful engagement around content that matters. Your capacity to know your students and see them supports those students who have been traditionally marginalized in schools," end quote. Because of the schedule change, our class will never be whole again unless we plan a virtual meeting outside of the district's schedule. My fifth graders want to know why, with only five weeks left of the school year, would district leaders propose such a catastrophic plan? The day after the schedule change was shared with OUSD families, three of my students, all from English-fluent homes, came to school confused about the schedule change based on the communication their families receive from the district. Since said change, at least six more of my students shared that they will not be able to attend class at all on Wednesdays. Why did district leaders propose such a silly plan where students would schlep to school for only one hundred minutes of instruction after being fully virtual on Wednesdays for the entire school year? It feels like it was a hasty decision made at the last minute to appease a small sector of very vocal parents who are demanding a full return to in-person learning. Newsflash, throwing this one hour forty minute Wednesday schedule is not music to their ears. In effect, all USD has done is obliterated whole-class learning communities and cohesion in our elementary schools. I am disgusted with the district's schedule plan and saddened by the board's rubber stamping of such a terrible idea at the cost of student.
Uh, we lost you, Victoria. All right. Next, the next speaker is Desiree.
Desiree, Victoria.
Hi, Desiree. You have three minutes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I should have spoken on this earlier, but I apparently pushed the wrong category. So hello, OUSD board members and Superintendent Vitale. My comment is brief, but I'd like to say thank you to all who came together to make sure there would be summer sessions for our two-way bilingual immersion program students. Just like their peers in regular classes, there are students who need additional support in TWBI, my first grade son included. We're looking forward to taking advantage of the additional, uh, support that's going to be offered. And I'll also take this opportunity to thank all of our dual immersion teachers for their hard work and dedication to this program. They definitely are an amazing, dynamic team. So thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Desiree. Do we have one more speaker tonight?
Heather in the room, Dr. Begin.
Okay, well, that means that concludes public comment tonight. Um, we have board staff discussion. And then we're going to, um, reconvene in the closed session.
I have a couple of very brief, um, things. One, I just want to voice because we haven't talked about it out in this, uh, meeting is that there has been a lot of frustration with elementary school schedule change and it did impose, um, difficulties on so many families. And I think it's just important that we recognize that we hear that, that we, the decision came about from a lot of different factors. And it's, it is really unfortunate that we came to that point and, and had such a negative impact on many families and and that I think we need to, we're looking forward now, but we do need to recognize that, you know, that, that did have an impact on, on our community. Uh, so that's, that's the only thing about the schedule. For, uh, looking ahead, as we're starting to come out, as the restrictions in June are going to be lifted.
I'd like to know what board colleagues think about returning to in-person meetings. Um, I love that we have this virtual, I, for me, it's, I just say my piece on it is uh, I think we should start looking at doing the in-person meetings if we're going to start full in-person instruction, especially for our children over the summer. And if we're going to do that, I want to make sure that we can provide this access for families because we've had so many working parents or parents that need to be home like right now that can participate in the meetings and, and stay up to date with what's going on in the district. So that's my thoughts. And I wonder what the rest of the board is thinking in that arena.
I agree. I think for accessibility for our families, to be able to hear our conversations and stay in touch, i- it is more accessible. I think Julie's having, Dr. Vitale's having Mr. Moon look at options for us to be able to do in-person and live streaming. Am I correct, Dr. Vitale?
Yes, we are looking into that. We are going to be obtaining a quote for the equipment that we need. It's not going to be, it's not going to happen quickly. And so, uh, because we do need to mount the equipment and we would most likely, we'd have to make a decision if we mounted in our boardroom here or at Chavez where we've held board meetings. And the logic we are thinking is that it would be here because people would have the opportunity to, uh, well, not engage in the meeting, but watch the meeting, to view the meeting. Until then, uh, we could try to resume in person and use this medium, um, not for public comment, but for streaming, but it would be, we would have to have, you would have to mute and unmute when you speak. We'd have to figure out how to do a public comment, which we could figure out. So that's just some of the complications. I do believe that the governor will lift the leniencies that he provided for us to hold completely remote meetings. So it's going to happen. I don't know if the magic date will remain June fifteenth. That seems to be the, the, the date that he is citing for the beyond the blueprint work. It's a very long answer to a short question. I'm, you have late teacher reading and I have late superintendent rambling. So did I answer your question though, Stacy? I didn't mean to go in circles if I did.
Oh, I, I think we need to look at how we're going to move forward after summer, but I like to keep the Zoom formats. However, we do the live streaming piece of it, but this seems to be working for now, but thanks for bringing that up, Eric. We definitely will have to have some conversations about it.
Yeah.
Since before we look into installing the equipment, K O C T may also be another option that could come out and stream. They have done so much.
That'd be great.
And they were at the track meet. There were all kinds of awesome things. So it's not going to be free, but uh, it may be our like bridge program between the two.
Yeah, good idea. And that's okay because the equipment won't be free either. So we will definitely, uh, we will definitely reach out to K O C T. That's a beautiful idea. Thank you. Yeah, we'll do that.
Here's, here's a radical idea. We can meet at council chambers. Equipment's there.
We, we could ask, you wanna, you wanna reach out and ask Mike or you want me to? I, I, I'll ask. I, I, I believe we've asked before and we were said, we were said, we were told they have a lot of activities in that area, but I will reach out again. That's not a problem. Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, okay.
Oceanside High School.
We have students that have at high school, exactly like, you know, Ms. Evans was saying that we have students that are in a CTE program that are doing these types of things that maybe we utilize and they have equipment that's amazing, some of them already on their own, that maybe we just grow that.
There is a, there is a full studio, yeah.
Yeah, so just putting it out there, our own students are amazing. So hello, let's just.
Right.
The other thing I'd like to
It would be phenomenal if we did use Oceanside.
All right, so on that, do we have any more board discussion?
Yes, yes. I'd like to request for the next board meeting that we include a resolution to rescind emergency declaration as we are now in standard operating and we're not having to make really fast moves at the last second. I think it's, it goes a long way, not only in restoring trust, but also making sure that all of the accountability measures in place that are in place traditionally within our setup. So I'd like to request that be added to the next board meeting agenda.
It's not a problem. We can put that on consent. Thank you.
Um, I'm not in favor of that necessarily, so, but I don't know that, I don't know what the governor's going to do June fifteenth.
So, uh, how about this? Um, I, I believe that the governor will be making an announcement either this week or next. So Eric, if we can just amend that to a meeting in June, I think we'll be fully prepared to do that June twenty-eighth, but if we're able to June, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong calendar, June twenty-second, but if we're able to June eighth, but how about we agree on a meeting in June?
No, perfect.
I think that'll be timely with the, uh, with, with the governor moving beyond the blueprint.
Yeah, I hope so.
Is that amenable, Mike?
Yeah.
I'm in agreement with Mike, you know, the fact that LA is in the yellow zone and I've been to LA and I, I cannot believe that we're still in our zone in LA is ahead of us.
All right, well, let's save this debate for when we meet in June. Definitely. All right. So anybody else have any thoughts they want to bring up before I reconvene us into closed session?
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, real quick. I, I, I know I didn't, I, I think I couldn't get my mic to work. I want to look at that community school model a little bit more and let's talk about it some more. I know we gave some conversation about it and to talk about it to see what it looks like and what it'll look like. So if we can bring that back at some point to be able to discuss it some more, I would like to.
Yeah, I know nothing about it. It's fundamental structure, but how it fits in our place at all, or, and I didn't, I know you raised it in context yesterday, Eric, in terms of some grant funding scenarios, but, um, I, I, I need a full-on discussion about that if staff is even considering bringing something forward like that. So I need, I need time with that to understand what it is and understand auctions to it and alternatives to deliver the same types of services to our families.
Yeah, there's several models and it's it can be controversial.
Yeah, and expensive.
All right, so Julie's got direction. Is there anything else you guys want to add to her plate? This is fun.
Appreciate it.
We really can't, can't really do this. You can't really do this to her at the end of the meeting. I'm not loading anything on there. I just
It's okay.
Offering a comment to Rach, to Raquel's comments and Eric's on the community school thing.
So as long as you let me work out the timing so that I can space that out for staff to do the appropriate investigation to bring back the information that would give you a robust look at what that means. Staffing-wise, monetarily, structurally, just all of the things. So I, I can't bring that back to you in June, but if you just give me a minute to think, uh, more than a minute, uh, I can think about the timeframe for staff.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Did you say tomorrow, Raquel?
I did a minute and a half.
A minute and a half.
All right, now we're getting punchy, so.
I want to put it in your, in your space and your, you know, just put it out.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'm adjourning us to closed session, so that's what we do.
You gotta go to the other, you have to go to the other access? Okay.
Yep. All right. Thanks for joining us tonight. And I will see my colleagues in closed session.
Okay, thank you.